I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, special meeting for November 3rd, 2010. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Anton?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet? And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, if you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will I have you standing, please? Anybody that is going to speak, and it's probably going to be all of you, that you need to be sworn in. So if you'd please raise your right hands, that I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
I can't see individually, so I will presume everybody is sworn in. All right, first order of business, now we have closed the public comment at our last meeting. Therefore, I would ask for a motion to open up public comment.
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, so we can go to public comment. I would first like to set some sort of an agenda. Realizing the amount of people that are here this evening, we have pretty well discussed all the pros and the cons last week pertaining to stormwater, traffic, signage, consolidation of lots. I would ask that, if you have to speak to these issues, please keep it short, because there are a lot of people here tonight, and we're going to be, it's going to be a long meeting. If you have anything new to say, I welcome it, and you will have all the time you need to speak. Secondly, just so there is no animosity or whatever, I would ask that you observe absolute decorum. If you are in favor of something, thank you, or against something, please remain calm and keep your composure. I would also ask that everybody silence or quiet, there are any and all electronic devices. Okay, where we left last week, the petitioners were advised of some of the complaints that the neighbors had, if the petitioners would care to come up and tell us how that thing has been going. Do we have a sign-in sheet?
Yeah, there's one right here.
Please. And I would ask that everybody that approaches the podium and speaks, if you would please
Mr. Chairman, if we could ask our IT person, we have a technical glitch here we're not seeing on this, whoop, there we go.
Oh yeah, here it comes.
That's the camera. Now, we're looking for the computer.
That's the camera, now we need the input for the laptop. Please, Mr. Priest.
So, the plans for this project were submitted to the Village of Westmont in early September. When we submitted those plans, it was suggested that we reach out to the neighbors immediately adjacent to the property. We proceeded to send out a notification to 35 folks immediately adjacent, and just over 12 showed up for a meeting at the Westmont Library. Several of the concerns that you heard at that meeting on October 13th were brought to our attention. That meeting was on October, or September 22nd. There was the public hearing on October 13th, and again, several of the same concerns came up. And at the end of that meeting, Commissioner Greg Pill suggested that we, West Highland Capital Partners, reach out to the individuals that have concerns, and that a block captain or a neighborhood representative be appointed. And Jim Addington took up that charge following that meeting. We met with Jim right outside these doors, had a brief conversation, we agreed to reconvene at our offices, West Highland Capital offices, 204 Chicago Avenue, in the morning. We met from 9:00 AM till noon with Jim. We talked about concerns, we talked about some history related to Westmont, we talked about some compromises and solutions and concessions that we could make. At the conclusion of that meeting, Jim was going to go back and talk with some of the neighbors, and he was going to follow up with us, which he did. It was very good meeting, good meeting after this meeting, good meeting the next morning, good follow-up call. The next time that I spoke with Jim was on the 22nd, Friday the 22nd, and he said that he'd spoken with the neighbors, and that they would like to meet as a group, 15 to 20 people, at our offices on a Monday night at 6:30. And I said that we would be happy to meet with any and all individuals that have concerns, no problem, I'll meet them at their house, I'll meet them at our office, but we've already had a public meeting at the library, and we've already had a public meeting on October 13th, and I don't feel that it's going to be productive to meet with a group of people. And Jim said, you know, I understand, and that was how we left it. I had another follow-up call with him on the 29th, that's this past Friday, and then I had a follow-up call with Jim today. During this time from the last meeting until today, I, myself and Andre, and some of my other partners that are here, have met with all of what we'll call the uniquely impacted neighbors, so those are the folks whose property abuts this project, as well as one family who lives directly across the street from the project. So, on October 22nd, we met with Michael and Mary Lonnie of 514 Blackhawk, and then we agreed to hold a follow-up meeting with them on October 27th. On the morning of October 25th, Michael called and decided to cancel that meeting. On October 29th, I met with Ray Knopka, they live 512 Richmond, that's the property south of our assemblage. And then, also, on October 29th, I met with Mr. and Mrs. Liu of 513 Blackhawk. I had a follow-up call with Ray Knopka after he met at our office, and I had a follow-up call with Mrs. Liu after I met with her and her husband at their home, and she also came to our office on November 2nd. I received several other calls from neighbors, and I had meetings with other neighbors. They've asked that I not specify them here in this public forum, and I'll respect that. But through speaking with the neighbors and the residents, there was, there was five concerns that came to the fore repeatedly. And I thought it would be helpful to address those five concerns in the way that they'll be addressed. So, the first concern was lighting. People were concerned that lighting from this property would bleed onto the adjacent properties. And the fact is that we've addressed that with shielding that'll go on those lights, as well as code requires that the light from this property be at 0.0 lumens at the property line. So the lighting concern is one that we can deal with. I think that was more of a communication issue than anything else, a fear of the unknown, but it will be dealt with, and it should not be an issue. Also, additionally, we're going to turn off the lights to the property one hour after our operating hours conclude, with the exception of security lighting. So there will be security lighting at all hours, however, any lights that are superfluous will be turned off. So that will address that concern. Another concern that was continuously brought to the fore is that the neighbors have stated that there's significant flooding in the area of this project, and that they feel when we install a parking lot that that flooding will be exacerbated. And again, the resolution to that is as follows, and I have a civil engineer here tonight to talk to the specifics, but basically, this assemblage is 4.2 acres, and none of those 4.2 acres are currently subject to stormwater regulations. When we've completed our site work and are ready to do business on this site, all of this property will be subject to stormwater and to the latest code. And so, when, when it rains, the stormwater that accumulates will be required to be detained on-site, and it will be let out at a programmed rate that is determined by code. So, again, that concern, we're not going to add to that problem, we're going to help alleviate the neighborhood problem. Whatever stormwater comes from this site at present will be dealt with up-to-date stormwater code. And I have Jeff here to talk to some specifics about it, so.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Tibbetts with WD Partners. And as Vince had mentioned, we do have a plan in place to handle, at least a preliminary plan at this point, to handle the stormwater. And a couple of the key items to bring up is the amount of runoff that is generated at this site today, because there are no stormwater management principles in play. And that's simply because of the date at which the project was, when the building, existing building and parking lot was built, the regulations didn't exist, or they weren't, they weren't incorporated into this, in this particular development. Given the current land use that's there, the amount that's paved, the amount that's grass, there's approximately 22 to 23 cubic feet per second of runoff that is leaving that site in a, in a number of different areas, and based on what the site is graded, it can go to the front, it can go to the back, and that's what's happening. It's going uncontrolled in a number of different locations. Following our calculations and design of the proper stormwater detention system, the amount that we will be allowed to release, amount of runoff that we'll be allowed to release, is less than a half a cubic foot per second. So the difference is 22 to 23 cubic feet per second to one-half. The rest will be impounded in a combination of above-ground and below-ground stormwater storage, in a vault system that takes, takes the place, almost takes, takes up most of the southern portion of the parking lot. So there is a significant amount, almost two acre feet, which is, which is nearly 80,000 cubic feet of storage, that will be impounded, so that that 100-year event that comes on the site doesn't release any faster than, than that .43 CFS. And that is a significant improvement over what's there today. And given DuPage County's history for some excessive storm events over the last five to 10 years, that would be a vast improvement, as far as what stormwater concerns would be. So, that's where we have, we have many more details to come with the, with the exact detention system that we propose, and how that's outlet, but at this point, those are the, those are the preliminary numbers that we've got.
Okay, so I'll move on to what we'll characterize as the uniquely impacted neighbors. Again, those are the folks whose property is immediately adjacent or directly across the street from the ingress egress on Blackhawk. So, Michael and Mary Lonnie live on Blackhawk, and they live directly across from where we're proposing the ingress and egress onto that street. I spoke with Mary Lonnie prior to the last public hearing, and then I met with Michael and Mary, Andre and I met with Michael and Mary on the 22nd, and, you know, they were very concerned about how this is going to impact their lives, and, and we discussed with them, you know, pretty frankly, we understood their concerns, and one of the things that we said is, we would offer to create a way for them to do a three-point turn in their, on their property, so that, because at present, they pull off of Blackhawk, pull straight into their garage, and then they back out onto Blackhawk to proceed to work or wherever they go. So we offered to pay to hire a landscape architect to meet with them, to design a way to create a three-point turn in their front yard, and also to create a landscape And we closed our meeting on that Friday, that we would meet on Wednesday. Monday morning, I got a call from Mike, and he said that my wife and I are going to cancel our meeting for Wednesday night. We, we went ahead with the landscape architect and with the rendering, and I'd like to share that if you could, so this is just, you know, what we discussed and what we proposed. So, you know, this would allow them to do a three-point turn, so they could nose into traffic rather than back into traffic, and those trees between the turnaround and the sidewalk would create a barrier for any light that would come from cars departing the, the site. But, but anyways, that was the conversation. We met on the 22nd, we spoke on Monday, the meeting on the Wednesday was canceled, but this is what was proposed. The next folks that I spoke with, I spoke with Ray Knopka, I met with him on the 29th at our office, and this is a picture that lets you see, the Knopkas' home is 512 Richmond, it's on the left, and to the right is 514 Richmond, that's a home that, that we've purchased that we're going to raise during the process. And you'll notice there's a pretty significant change in grade from the front of that house to their front yard. And their home at present, I don't have their plat, but from Google Earth and the scaling that I can do on that, it looks like they're about three feet off the property line, and this house is about 10 feet off the property line. So at present, there's about a 13-foot gap between their home and the adjacent home. Okay, so, in speaking with Jim, that was one of the concerns that we had recognized, and that we said we would like to meet with the Knopkas, if he could help facilitate that meeting. When he and I spoke, he said, I think it would be better if you contact them yourselves, and I did. And so I met Ray, and this is the rendering that I shared with Ray when he came to the office. So that fence would be similar to the grade, I showed you there's a change in grade between the house that's there at present, that's similar to the grade by the front door of that home. It's also in a location similar to the southern edge of the house that's there at present. So, the Knopkas' lot is a 50-foot lot, and it would be approximately 13 feet from the edge of their house to the edge of that fence, and we offered to put that in, to put the bigger fence, as well as landscape the southern side of the fence, as opposed to just the northern side of the fence. So that's the content of the conversation. I had a follow-up call with Jim, excuse me, with Ray, that we, we met on a Friday, he called me on Saturday, and he had some questions, where's the fence, where's the curb, where's the parking lot, and, and we walked through all of that. Okay, the next folks that I met with were the Liu's, that was Mr. and Mrs. Liu, I met with them also on Friday the 29th, and this is a picture of their home, this is, this is their home, and that would be the western, that would be the southern edge of the western parcel that will allow our, our traffic to enter and egress onto Blackhawk. So, that's, that's the way that it looks at present, that's the way that it would look when it's completed. So you can see that there's a 22-foot landscape, 22-foot landscape barrier between their home and the curb, right there where it says Westmont Market. So that's what was discussed, and what was proposed, and, you know, some concerns that they had were, you know, what's going to be between us and them, and I shared with them that it would be landscape, as well as a six-foot cedar plank fence. Another concern that they had was noise. Their, their home is more than 100 yards from the loading area and the dumpsters. So, the superfluous noise that's caused from our business will be really far from their house, and our hours of operations, you know, seven to nine, they, they weren't so concerned with the hours of operation, they were more concerned with the off-hours, and like I said, they're about in excess of 100 yards from the dumpsters and from delivery trucks, et cetera. So, those were the three, what we'll refer to as the uniquely impacted neighbors, the conversations, the follow-up, the compromises and solutions that were offered. Another concern that came up was property values, and it was addressed, there was a letter that was sent out by the neighborhood group, I believe it was Westmont Residents for Safety, or something like that, but there was a leaflet that went out, and it said, you know, you need to act immediately, our property, our property values are going to drop significantly, the neighborhood streets are going to turn into a speedway, and our children are at risk, this is what the letter said. And so, I thought it would be helpful to just kind of walk through what this site is at present, and what the site could look like if this project goes forward. So, you'll notice right there that at the intersection of Ogden Avenue and Richmond Avenue, you have a very old dilapidated building with non-compliant, not non-compliant, but, but robust overhead wires that are subject to failure. And what we're proposing is a new building, state-of-the-art, we're going to go underground with all of those electric wires right there, and, you know, this is, this is what it looks like at present, this is what it will look like if the project goes forward. So, I, I would subject to you all that the adjacent property values will not be impacted negatively by this, they will be impacted very positively, and I'm very confident about that, and I want you all to hear that. I mean, this project is going to be good for Westmont and good for the adjacent property owners. So, here's what it looks like in the back, okay? You've got no stormwater, you've got a parking lot that hasn't been touched in excess of 15 years, you've got weeds growing through there, you've got a dumpster, you've got trucks, delivery trucks, you've got chemicals being added to furniture outside that I've seen on numerous occasions, you've got an automotive repair shop, you've got air hammers, this is what's happening there at present. Okay, this is what it's going to look like when we're done. Okay, this is when you're standing on the property and you're looking due west. So if you're in the middle of that parking lot, and you're looking toward Blackhawk, this is what we have. It is a vacant lot that has standing water on it when there's robust rainfall, tons of beer cans back there, tons of garbage, a lot of debris, there's been no weeding or tree trimming of any kind, this is what you have. Okay, you have this parking lot, and this is what it looks like, it looks like a squatter's residence right there. Okay, this is what it's going to look like when we're done. Very robust, mature landscaping to be put in, and fences sensitive to the neighbors. So, we're proposing a project that's going to be lands, we're proposing a commercial project that's going to be landscaped like a first-class residential neighborhood, that's what we're proposing. Okay, and another thing I would say is just that, there's 17 trees in front of Old Plank right now that are in excess of five inches in diameter, five, six, seven inches in diameter. We're going to relocate those trees to the southern property line, so the neighbors will have the benefit of mature landscaping immediately on the southern property line. It's not like we're putting little two-inch gauge trees around the property, so it's unique, this opportunity that we have, that we can reuse these trees. And, you know, and I would just direct everyone's attention to the comment from the Village Landscape Review paperwork that they sent us, okay? The village said this, "The landscape features and pedestrian orientation of this development could serve as a benchmark for future projects in Westmont." We are not proposing a slash-and-burn, develop, come in here, make a lot of money, we don't care about the neighbors. We are proposing to do an excellent business with an excess of 120 jobs for this community. We've put our corporate headquarters here, we have met with all these neighbors, I have met with Jim Addington, I have taken phone calls from Jim Addington, and we are telling you that we're going to come in here, we're going to be the honest, ethical, hard-working business people, and we would like the opportunity to go forward with this project. And then the last concern that we have heard consistently from all the neighbors is traffic, okay? Traffic. We submitted a traffic study to the Village of Westmont, and it addressed traffic flow and all of the specifics related to traffic of this project. The village engineer, Steve May, very conservative guy, very matter-of-fact guy, this is how it is, he has no stake in this game. Here is what your employee said, okay? Steve May summarized our traffic report by saying, "This business will have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Further, the streets in question are more than adequate to handle the associated incremental traffic flow." Okay? Again, another letter, I'm referring to the letter that went out this weekend to scare all the neighbors, said, quote, "There's more than 750 to 1,000 cars that you will be subject to on a daily basis in our neighborhood as a result of this project." That is patently false. This project is going to generate possibly 750 to 1,000 cars, but we positioned this store on Ogden Avenue so we could have access to the 38,000 to 45,000 cars that pass by every day. There's not going to be 750 to 1,000 cars coming up Richmond and Blackhawk, that's preposterous. We have a, we have a traffic consultant here, he's going to go through the specifics of this study, but I would just like to summarize a couple of things. Right now, right now, there's 3,000 cars a day estimated on Blackhawk Drive, 3,000 cars. Our project is going to add 157 cars a day. So instead of seeing 3,000 cars on Blackhawk every day, they're going to see 3,157. Okay? Right now, there's 1,000 cars a day on Richmond Avenue, 1,000 cars. If our business is approved, the incremental traffic's going to be 52 cars, there will be 3,052 cars. So a lot of this stuff that you're going to hear tonight when I'm done, is going to be talking about traffic, and I would submit to you, an increase from 3,000 to 3,157, the street can handle it on Blackhawk. And on Richmond, from 1,000 to 1,052, it can handle it. So, with that, you know, I have Tim Doran here, he's the Director of Planning from Gewalt Hamilton, Gewalt Hamilton, and he, he'll go through the specifics of the traffic study and how we got to those numbers. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Tim Doran, I'm Director of Transportation Planning for Gewalt Hamilton. We have offices in Vernon Hills in Chicago and Gurnee, and we do work all over the region. I know a previous traffic study was submitted, and even a supplemental follow-up study was submitted, and Mr. May reviewed it and opined on it. But I'd like to go through just a couple of the specifics tonight. First of all, I, traffic is always an interesting issue, I've been doing this for quite a few years, it's never anything you like, and as I always tell people that work with us, the civil engineers, we can't put it underground in vaults or anything else, but from a commercial standpoint, traffic is very good. Now, this, I've been through this situation many times before, where a commercial frontage on a major arterial that carries 32,000 cars a day, like Ogden Avenue, US 34, abuts residential, and that's very commonplace all along Ogden Avenue, whether it's in Downers Grove, Downers Grove, or all the way to Naperville or east, as it goes into Western Springs and some of those communities. That is going to handle the preponderant amount of traffic that's going to enter and exit the site. The site is situated next to a collector's street, which is defined as a collector's street, which is a really an important street in your comprehensive plan, that's Blackhawk. And then Richmond obviously borders the site on the east. But as Mr. Priest said, that, that will have some traffic, but I'd like to emphasize a couple of issues with you, and then get in just a couple more specifics, because I'm sure there'll be other discussions on traffic tonight. Traffic is always something that where perception and reality meet, and it's really tough. As I said, perception of traffic is always awful, but it's something that's the lifeblood for commercial and the lifeblood for us, and as I always say, when it comes to traffic, we generally have met the enemy, and it is us, because we're the people that drive around town. And I would mention parenthetically that most of the traffic on Blackhawk or on Richmond, the very small amount of traffic that is on there, that will approach a site, are neighbors, are Westmont residences, because of the lack of continuity of Blackhawk. are Westmont residences, because of the lack of continuity of Blackhawk as it crosses over Naperville and kind of dies out at Chicago. I know you can work your way theoretically through the neighborhoods and work your way into the downtown and other, but Blackhawk and Richmond were not streets that were meant for inter-community travel, they're collector's streets, they collect from the locals who then spill out onto Ogden Avenue or onto Chicago Avenue and move over to Cass or Points to the east. So, that's kind of the way traffic operates in every town, and so, I think that's a very important point, that any new traffic, and we can cite numbers, and we use our best engineering judgment, that's the second thing I'd like to say, the standards we use are not guesstimates, they're based on standards that are set by the owner department of transportation, that are set by your village, or set by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, they, we try and put more science in and less art, but it's always estimating based on general factors, so there is some engineering judgment. So, when we say it's going to be this many trips on a street, could it be a variance either way? It could be less, it could be more, but very, very close. We think our estimates are very close. The last comment I wanted to make, but I'll talk about it later, is because of its B2 zoning, something will be built there. And right now, it's a muffler shop and an auto body repair, and I think like an antique store, I don't know how busy they are, but something will be built with an FAR of .8, which generally is equivalent to about 70,000 square feet. We know you can't just fill the whole property up with a building, there's parking, but I have worked on numerous developments that go up. Your code allows for a height of 45 feet, so I'm not saying this to pour fire gasoline on a flame, just saying that there are other possibilities could be made there, that could be built there. Could be office, medical office, a combination of what we affectionately call a shopping center, not like Oak Brook, but a shopping center, it's a combination of uses, a subway, a 7-Eleven, a cellular phone store, medical office, regular office. So, there's a number of things that your code allows for that goes up to 45 feet. That's not to scare anyone, I'm just saying that there will be some traffic there, and always, everything that's built there will have some traffic up and down Blackhawk, it's a collector's street. But again, I'd like to emphasize that that is a, is a, a street that's meant to collect traffic, not for inter-community travel. This is a site, you're all familiar with it, on the north is Ogden Avenue, US 34, very important street carrying about 32,000 cars a day. Blackhawk is to the left and Richmond's to the right. Now, we estimated the traffic daily on Blackhawk, there's a formula for that. We looked, we counted the intersection of Blackhawk and Ogden, and when you come up with a peak hour count, it generally represents about 10% of traffic on there all day. The village didn't have all-day traffic counts on there, but we counted that intersection. So, we estimated somewhere in the area of 3,500 cars a day, and on Richmond, somewhere in the area of about 1,000 cars a day, which would be typical for streets of that size in that operation. The site plan was talked about previously, but we did close the southerly drive, so there's only one drive out onto Richmond now and one onto Blackhawk. And of course, a very important drive on Ogden Avenue. All of our deliveries, say it again, all of our deliveries, and we control the deliveries, will enter off of Ogden Avenue, circulate into the loading zone, let's see if I can get this right, there, into the loading area, and then proceed out and on, and they will only be allowed, I knew that was going to happen, they will only be allowed to turn to the north on Richmond. So, we control the deliveries, they come from our distribution, they will be told how to get into the site and how to exit, they will not, they would have no reason to proceed south into the neighborhood, they want to get back onto Ogden Avenue so they can go back to the expressway system. This is what I talked about, and I thought it would be useful for you to see it. It's a comparison of traffic, the top is the Westmont Village Market, and it shows 31,700 square feet. Can you all see that? Yeah, it's hard to see.
Yeah, we've got extras.
I'm going to, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think I have some extras here I'd like to hand out. Yeah, I don't, I only have one sheet. I don't know.
Try it, try it there on the projector, and maybe you can zoom in a little bit.
Okay, let's do that.
There you go. Maybe not.
Power light, I don't see a zooming device here. Oh, here we go. Yeah, that does it. All right, let's walk through this. At the top is the Westmont Market, and then the B2 uses that are potentials within the B2 zone, and I just took some samples. There are a whole bunch of other uses, but I looked at office, medical office and shopping center at the allowable FAR for the site, which is a little over two acres. I then looked at traffic based on those FARs for the different uses, and if you can see here, I noted pluses and minuses, office, medical office, all generate more traffic. But I think the key issue is all the way over on the far right, which shows daily traffic, because we talked about daily traffic from our site, and I'm going to get into that in just a second. The number has been flying around that there'd be 1,500 cars intruding south into the neighborhood, not true. The estimates based on those standards that I talked to you about would be 1,500 cars a day, 1,500 trips a day in and out of the site, of which the preponderance would be off of Ogden Avenue. Now, we estimated conservatively that about 15% would be going south on Blackhawk, but I'd like to walk you through those numbers in a second. If you can see over in this column, office is about a wash with ours, we're about 1,050. And let me make a little explanation here, 1,500 cars a day based on standards, some of those people are already on the street. So, I leave my home, and I'd say I live down near Chicago and Blackhawk, I leave my home on a Saturday morning to do a trip. I'm going to Jewel to buy cereal, whatever else I buy there, meat, poultry, whatever. I may make a multiplicity of stops, and this is a standard, we're not making this up. And so, I'm going to go to Jewel, a number of other stops, and on the way back, I'm going to stop in the Westmont Market for maybe produce or other things that I happen to like there, bakery goods and so on. So, we back out, out of the 1,500 trips, 30%, which is a standard that's used to back out, because those trips are already on the street, they're not new to Blackhawk, but they're making another stop into Westmont Market. So, we come out with a net number which is 1,050. From that, I looked at a comparison between office, which is 1,020, medical office, which is 2660, and shopping center. Now, again, not Oak Brook, but a multiplicity of uses, restaurant, coffee, a subway, office, 7-Eleven, cellular phone store, those are all categorized by standards as a shopping center. So, I just, I thought it would be helpful to you to understand that a comparison of what's permitted in the FAR in the B2 zone will produce traffic also, and something will be developed there. Now, are we going to get back on here? This is a traffic comparison I just talked about, Westmont Market, total morning trips, because we're not open and real busy early in the morning, total PM trips, 235, total daily trips, 1,050. That's all day over a 12 to 14-hour period. The average of those uses I just talked to you about, office, medical office, shopping center and so on, the average are shown on the bottom. So, total AM trips for the average is 110, total PM trips, 235, total daily, this is the average of the traffic that was generated by those permitted uses in the B2 district. And again, I didn't pick some oddball uses, I picked office, medical office, shopping center, which would be the most likely categories to go in along Ogden Avenue. So, I'm not trying to minimize traffic. I always say this categorically, that traffic is always a tough issue, but it comes with development. It's good for development, it's good for commercial uses, it has to be controlled and laid out properly with proper access, which I believe this site is. But we will generate traffic, but as an average of other permitted uses, we are remarkably Travel patterns, imagine average amount of new traffic on Blackhawk would be, and this is a very, I think, a really important issue, and this is maybe the most important issue. The traffic on Blackhawk Avenue, again, if you look at the 1,050 trips that we talked about a day, that going in and out of our site, most of them on Ogden Avenue, some to the north, about 15% we projected to be on Blackhawk. When you divide that into the hourly, the hours of the operations during the day, and to divide them into 16 minutes, we know it's not always going to happen that equally, but if two came at one time, then one won't come for the next 10 minutes. So, it's statistically, it's got to work out that way. A new trip in and out every five to six minutes, every, I'll say it again, a new trip in and out of the site every five to six minutes going to the south or coming from the south on Blackhawk. And that is statistically correct, statistically correct. If there were two that came at one time or three, then that time period becomes more protracted, it could be 10 minutes before the next trip comes along. Again, I want to emphasize that travel on Blackhawk will be primarily from local residents. Most of the people living to the south are going to be, that are approaching the site are going to be the people that live down there, people from your community. We still believe that most trips will come from Ogden Avenue, it's the main arterial, it makes sense that most of them will come from Ogden Avenue. Before I sit down, I wanted to mention about Richmond, I didn't say much about Richmond, because Richmond carries far fewer trips a day than does Blackhawk, and we averaged, Richmond's about 1,000 cars a day, we backed that out of the intersection, and the traffic, we assigned 5% to Richmond. So, we assigned 5% of our traffic to the south, to and from the south on Richmond, 15% to and from the south on Blackhawk. I think we were a little conservative, I think more will be coming from Ogden, but I'd rather be more conservative in that respect. So, Richmond would handle about 5% of the traffic, could it be 7%? Could it be 3%? Yeah, but that's about a trip every 15 minutes, a trip every 15 minutes on Richmond. So, I'm going to conclude by saying, I'm not, the neighbors are here tonight, I'm not trying to say there's no traffic, I'm not trying to minimize it or brush it off, but when you look at the numbers and divide perception from reality, that is something that I think is really important when you're looking at a new use like this, which I think is very beneficial to the village. So, that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, it's good to see you guys again, appreciate the time. Before I make a couple closing comments, Tim, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on the comparison of the use of, of the traffic that this project would bring versus another possible use. That was for just the two acres that was B2 currently, is that correct?
It's for the two acres, that's correct.
Right, so, I just want to make sure you understand that, that the point we're trying to make there, I think, is just that, to the extent that something happens on that property, it's going to have some impact. So, the question is really whether this project is going to add an incremental traffic burden on either one of those two streets, and I think that Tim's done a good job in showing that that's not the case. So, I don't have a lot to add, I just thought I'd make a few closing remarks. I thought Vince's presentation this evening, I think he did a great job of doing a couple of things. One is defining the concerns expressed by the neighborhood, both in the prior meeting that we had here, subsequent conversations that we've had, and whatever, in whatever way we've, we've come to understand what those concerns are, and we may hear new ones tonight, but he did a good job of defining what those are. He also demonstrated the efforts we've made to work with those neighbors in an effort to modify our plans accordingly where possible. As Vince has shown, I think, just clearly to summarize what he said, is I think it's compatible, I think this is very compatible for the location and for the, for the neighborhood and surrounding community. All five partners in the project are here tonight, we've all relocated to the area and are excited to begin to execute and refine the vision that we share. We have a strong record of success in the food business as suppliers, and look forward to becoming food retailers in a format that's both unique and exciting. Our vision is to expand our business based on the success at this location to other nearby suburban communities, and to this end, we're already working on numerous additional sites. This project offers Westmont not only the presence of an innovative retail format with over 120 jobs, but also the headquarters of a business with plans for growth that should bring yet more high-quality jobs to town. In conclusion, and I say this sincerely, we've enjoyed working with and getting to know a number of the folks here in Westmont, and are very excited to become part of your community. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Priest, I believe now that our site plan that we are looking at, if you would come up to the podium, please. Our site plan is no longer current, the one that we're with. We have two entrance exits on Richmond, and you're eliminating one.
That's correct. So, I'm sorry, I've...
And also the fence is being moved back from where it's shown on our landscape plan.
That's correct. So, if you look at the site plan that's, that's on the screen right there, on the bottom right, was moved 10 feet north along the southern property line, and the curb cut, the southernmost curb cut entering and exiting onto Richmond was eliminated, and then signs are being added. I'll just have to walk over here.
Sure.
A sign is going to be added right here that says, "Delivery trucks must turn left", and another sign is being added here that says, "Delivery trucks must turn left." So, it's, and this is a concrete barrier, so delivery trucks, it's virtually impossible for them unless they drive over these concrete abutments to get onto Blackhawk. So, delivery trucks will enter from Ogden, they will exit onto Richmond and head north. And the second fence is eliminated.
Okay, just so the Commission members realize that. Okay.
And the fences were changed. The fences, I believe the code was four feet, the fences were extended to six feet.
And I was under the impression they were also moved back?
Yeah, the fence on the southern property line was moved back, yes.
Is moved to the north?
To the north, 10 feet.
Okay.
And we'll be happy to distribute this rendering.
I just want the Commission members to know what we're going to be voting on later on, that's all, so nobody's in the dark. Okay, would that conclude your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will hear from the public now. If you will please sign in, give us your name. Jim, you don't have to.
They took the sign-in sheet again. Okay, good evening. My name is James Addington, I live at 337 East Trobe in Westmont. I'm approximately 600 feet from where this project is proposed, and I have lived in my home there on Trobe Street since 1972, so I'm almost a 40-year resident of that neighborhood. Reason I mention that is, as other people come up and talk tonight, I've asked them also to let you know how long we have, and many of my friends and neighbors have lived in that neighborhood. We are a very strongly established homeownership residential neighborhood in Westmont, and that's not necessarily the case in some of the other areas of town. And again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address you again. When we met last time, there were a lot of suggestions made, and I guess this ends up being the tale of two stories, both of them a little bit different than the other one. But let me try to go through some of the things that you had talked about and then made suggestions on, and what I tried to do in trying to work something out. But several of you made suggestions. One of them was that to restore that 50-foot buffer over by the Canaca property on Richmond Street. And basically, they have done something to move the fence line back and create a little more of a buffer area than was there before, but not the whole 50 feet. What's significant about the 50 feet is that back in the 70s, when Luke's Restaurant was given permission to allow the parking to help supplement their banquet business, the village board at that time said, "Yes, we'll allow you to do that." Over the objections of this board, by the way, the Planning Commission at that time had said, "No," and the village board said, "Yes." And then a lawsuit was filed by a developer... filed by a developer back in the early 80s, and the village was the defendant. And Pete Samus, who was the village attorney that time, who at that point was still with the law firm that presently serves, does a great job of serving this community, was the attorney who prepared the answer to that lawsuit. And I have a copy of that. And I think what's interesting is that if you look at some of the arguments that Attorney Samus made for the village in defending us in the lawsuit from Peter Chek at the time, was that he made a very strong argument about the fact that the 50-foot setback that the village board had approved to allow that additional parking to go in under the special use was exactly the right thing to do, to buffer the residential area. And then I think there's another spot in here that I had kind of highlighted. And it says, "It cannot be overemphasized that without the 50-foot buffer, the Luke's Restaurant would never have received a permit to operate the parking lot in connection with the restaurant." Now, that's a different lawsuit under a different circumstance that doesn't necessarily have a lot of bearing here. However, there is a situation where the village got sued by somebody who wanted to put up a multifamily unit on that 50-foot space. And one of the things that we used as a defense in that case, as a village, was to say that, no, there should be some kind of a buffer between commercial and residential. And I think we all agree with that. But they did try to move it back a little bit. There is some compromise there. Steve, I think you had suggested they consider not doing the lot consolidation. Basically, I brought that up to them when I met for them for the three hours, and they basically said, "No," that they needed the entire lot consolidation. Again, they hadn't addressed that this evening as one of the big concerns. But I think that still is, and it should still be considered. Ed?
Ed?
Oh, that's okay. No, that's okay. You had suggested possibly eliminating the 21 parking spaces that were the closest to the Canucka residents in order to create more of a buffer zone. They basically said to me at that time that they needed those spaces and would not consider eliminating them. And finally, Greg, you had asked me to act as a go-between, if you will, to try to affect some kind of a way of resolving this and come back to you with maybe a compromise. I had 11 families, most of the ones that were mostly really impacted by this, who are ready to come meet with them, that I had set up to understand that the only thing that this thing would work was everybody had to give. They had to give a little, and the residents and neighbors that we were working with also had to give a little. They refused to meet with them. I mean, I can't say it better than that. Yes, they said they would meet individually, but they wouldn't meet with this group collectively. Basically, they made me look like a fool in front of my friends and neighbors because I had those people set up to sit down and talk compromise. And they said, "No." I don't know what else to tell you about that. You know, I did what you asked me to do, Greg, and I got slammed right back in my face. I think a lot of our friends are here tonight to talk about issues. I agree with you. I have asked all of them, please don't bring up the stuff they talked about last time. You don't need it. I don't need it. You know some of the issues that may have been discussed. So hopefully, you'll hear some new things. There's one thing I want to point out. Village staff mentioned at the first meeting that to decide how to, you know, draw a line, if you will, on what should be residential and what should be commercial, that possibly the idea was to use that line that butted up to the back end of the bowling alley, all the way across to the back end of this proposed property. If you do that, both cul-de-sacs, Washington Court over on Washington Street and Rosewood Court over on Wilmette Street are wiped out. In addition to that, you have eliminated 43 residential homes. It wipes out our neighborhood. It changes the face of our neighborhood. That's a lot of residential homes to potentially say, "You're not going to be a home anymore. You're going to be part of commercial, part of Ogden Avenue." And I just think that's way too many homes to wipe out. It ruins our neighborhoods. So with that, I think that I want to sit down for a few minutes. There's a couple of other things I want to do, but I think you should hear from some of the other residents because there are some other things that they want to talk about, traffic and flooding. There's some new information that I think is going to be coming forward on that. So, but it does really get down to, the real bottom line here is, we are concerned about the traffic. I dispute what they're telling me with regard to where the traffic is going to go. All of you, almost every one of you in this room at the last meeting said, "I try to avoid Ogden Avenue if I can." If their customers are coming from Hinsdale or Downers Grove or Southwestmont, where are they going to go? Are they going to go down to Ogden Avenue to get to this place? No. They're going to go down Blackhawk and Richmond. And when they go home, they're going to go back that way because the Hinsdale folks are not going to go on Ogden Avenue. They're going to go across 83 at the bridge by Notre Dame Church because there's no light and no traffic. That's where the traffic's going. It's going right by my house. And it puts our children in jeopardy. So with that, I will let some of the other folks talk, and then we'll try to wrap this thing up and maybe not make it too late. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Jean Grish. I live on East Traubi between Warwick and West, excuse me, Warwick and Wilmette. Four concerns that I have, taxes. I wasn't at the last meeting. I was medically incapacitated. Taxes, will those increase? They're already high in DuPage County. Do we need another food store? We already have The Jewel. We have Nature's Best on Chicago Avenue and Cass. The Walgreens, I believe, is going up at Cass and Ogden where there was a White Castle. A fourth concern, which may not have anything to do with this, is that motel on Oxford in Clarendon Hills. I believe a car dealership is going up. My concern is that there is more traffic and that residential neighborhood will become too commercial with huge, I mean, just huge, I don't even know, huge capacity for stores and lots that are already crowding Ogden Avenue. And my concern, the last one, is crime. Will there be an increase since there are perhaps non-locals who would be hired at the store? Will people kind of be cruising around the neighborhood, seeing different homes perhaps to burglarize? Thank you for letting me speak. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Tim Kellerman. I have lived in Westmont for roughly 31 years. And I'm actually here, I happened to catch the meeting three weeks ago. And I knew nothing about this. And Vince Priest, I've known for four years. And I was just a little upset that his integrity was being questioned by some people. And I can assure this board that this man is of high integrity. He will do whatever it takes to make this happen with the residents and work with them and along with the board. And I just think Westmont should be very happy to have a man of this guy's integrity coming into this town. He will, he's a stand-up guy. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will anybody else please sign in and?
Okay. I'm Mary Robertson Iverson. I live at 320 North Warwick. And as of next year, it'll be 50 years that that's my home address. Like Jim Addington mentioned, we are not only a neighborhood, but just like Oakwood, Ashford, you name it, we are a subdivision, Northeast Akers. What is happening on one street does somehow wind up affecting all of us. We have to look at Northeast Akers as a package product here. What I wanted to ask about the hookup to the Traubi sewer, storm sewer line, why is it that it has to be hooked up to that line? I'm going to look to Fred because Steve May, I don't see Steve May here.
Steve is not here, but that's the main storm sewer line. As you're aware, Mary, the village has just completed a village-wide stormwater study with Christopher Burke Engineering. One of the conclusions of that study is that we should initiate intergovernmental action with the village of Clarendon Hills to enlarge that storm sewer on Traubi. So what we are requiring this developer to do, in addition to applying modern engineering standards to seven parcels that have never before been engineered under modern stormwater standards, we're going to require them to build a new 18-inch storm sewer line from the corner of their property 300 feet south to tie into the main line at Traubi. And then the controlled release will take place through that. But in and of itself, I'll ask the engineer Jeff, that will have some storage capacity as well that doesn't presently exist in the neighborhood.
Right.
So in addition to providing onsite detention, both above ground and underground in storage vaults according to predetermined engineering calculations, this new storm sewer line will be able to handle additional storm water underground where it won't surface flood the neighbors' homes to the south.
Okay. My next question is, all the businesses that are on Ogden Avenue, let's say between Cass and wherever, whether we're going to Oxford or whatever, am I correct in understanding that any of them that do have a storm sewer system makes, that system makes its way to Traubi? Or is there another line on Ogden Avenue that they may be hooked up to?
I do not know the answer to that question as that deals with stormwater issues in an adjacent community.
Simpler question. Walgreens, their storm sewer system, what are they hooked up to?
They would probably be hooked up to the main line on Traubi as well.
Okay. All right.
They will also be installing very elaborate underground stormwater detention vaults. And you've seen those go in as the construction has proceeded.
Okay. Because I think, I'm not sure if this board is aware of it or not, but recently a moratorium, a building moratorium was placed on Warwick. I'm not exactly sure which properties it involves because there was a magical blue line, I think, that the board was told, you know, is what staff recommended, that you stay within, you know, as far as this building moratorium. Stop me if I'm wrong. I've watched the meetings. But, and personally, I have no problem with it because we have a genuine, genuine problem. If the camera comes up, I'd love to share with you so that everyone can see what's been happening on Warwick Avenue. This would be the most north part of the 400 block. This is, when we talk flooding, this is flooding. This is a mailbox. Okay? So that's how much they're seeing on the 400 block when we get flooded. To look down the street, you can see not only that upper 400 block, but now the water is currently backing up south. And this is not surface water. This is the water that is in the sewer lines. Once the water tops off at this point, it starts traveling this way, and now we are seeing flooding here. We have a combination of surface and then the sewer water. We see the sewers bubbling up. So that's not our water. It's, this is water that appears to be coming from somewhere else. Here's another picture of that same 400 block, the second area. This is closest to Melrose. So right there are two areas on the 400 block that are currently backing up. And I'm not talking, you know, when they say 100-year flood, we are well beyond that. This is getting to be a regular thing. And as you can see by this picture, one of my neighbors gave, this is one of the ones from one of the last storms this summer that the kids love it. The kids are having fun there. But it does get a little dangerous. I imagine they have parents that know where they're at. Once, once the 400 block hits its leveling off, it is now spilling into the 300 block. This is the ditch that is currently in front of my house. And you can see how it starts spreading onto, it's backing up our yards now. My neighbor across the street asked me to share these pictures with you because they could not be here. This is what they're, oh, no.
It'll focus here just a second. There we go.
Oh, okay. This is, he just took this picture yesterday. This is currently what his property looks like. And there is a storm sewer here, right, right here. This is what they are dealing with once the other properties, once the water starts traveling south. This water is not necessarily surface water. This is water that is backing up into their yard. And as you can see, it not only spills from his property, this is a rear view of his property. He's showing how it comes from the spillage that's coming out of the front yard, and it is now traveling to his backyard. And then this is his backyard, going to one of the yards that butts up against him from Naperville Road. Then it also spills over to the neighbor, right to his south. And you'll notice sandbags. And from hers to the neighbor to her south. So, and we really do appreciate the fact that the village recognizes something serious is happening on our street, gave, put us under this building moratorium and everything. But this is the same system. This is Traubi Avenue. We are not getting any relief currently. And we don't know from now what's going on with the Walgreens going in, is that going to complicate? We are taking virgin area that has had just surface runoff. And every time I hear village staff mentioning about how this is going to be an improvement, is this an improvement to the surface runoff for these parking lots? Yes. But it's now capturing water that has never been captured before, and it is putting this water into a system that is grossly failing us right now. We do not have the infrastructure, in my professional opinion. I don't think we have enough capacity to handle all this development. I wonder, you know, if our, we've only been looking at the new construction that's gone on the blocks, any alterations that people have been doing to their property. But now, in light of all this, I'm wondering if any improvements that has gone on Ogden Avenue is not even part of the complicating thing. You know, I don't know, did Porsche do any upgrades? Did any of those car dealerships, you know, in that stretch on the south side of Warwick, did they do any of these new and improved things that are now entering into our system that had never, ever been there before? We got a lot of water that can't make the trip to Clarendon Hills. And I don't think we can blame Clarendon Hills for all of it. I think it's a volume thing. Okay?
Okay. Point of clarification, if I may.
Sure.
And please, Fred, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, we have 100% of all the water that falls on the existing park- Right now, we have 100% of all the water that falls on the existing parking lots goes to Traulby. 100% of this water.
No.
Stop.
It does not.
No.
They're saying it's all surface spillage.
Some goes north.
It's staying on top.
Little bit goes north.
I'm sorry?
But 100% of this water that will fall on this property, if it's approved and built, will be captured. It will be released through a what size?
Restrictor.
Restrictor.
Which is gonna be released in a time.
Two, three inch, or?
Well, yeah, probably.
It'll be restricted into a two or a three inch. In essence, they're gonna be building a giant swimming pool with a very small opening compared to all of this sheet water that's rolling off right now into Traulby.
No, this water is not currently going into Traulby. It's not underground yet. The stuff that is falling on their lot currently is just spilling into yards, it's spilling onto the street, it's.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Ultimately, it's getting to Traulby.
That's what's being captured.
That's surface flooding to the south.
That's surface water that's rolling across the land.
It's surface, okay, yes.
It's going down to the low area.
Gotcha, gotcha. Right, so the surface flooding is what's being addressed with this project, but what I'm wondering is, once that surface water is now underground into the Traulby, I don't know, for lack of a better term.
Storm sewer.
Trunk, or whatever, is that gonna be, we don't even know, we're currently supposed to be entering a study that includes Warwick and then Traulby Avenue. That's why we're under a moratorium, to get our stuff together so we can figure out why this system is failing us.
I realize that. All I'm telling you is, the way this project is engineered. They are not going to be aggravating their property, that problem, they are going to be diminishing that problem that you are seeing right now.
Okay, so that.
They're not alleviating it where it's going to disappear.
Okay.
That's gonna take a bigger plan done on a larger geographical basis, but they will be mitigating this problem as to the amount of water that their property will shed. It won't be an all-at-once discharge.
Right.
It'll be a discharge over a very long period of time.
And it would be nice if every business did this, but we don't have that opportunity just yet. As we go, everybody will do this.
Okay, so you don't see it that they are now taking their water and tapping it underground into this Traulby line?
They are, but it's gonna go a lot slower. I do this all the time, and what they do is they keep the water, so if it rains really bad out, they fill their tanks up.
Okay.
It comes out very slow, so two days later, they could still be draining into it. It's not gonna be a big rush where everybody gets slammed. So what happens is they keep it, they hold it a little while, and the engineer can jump in, and they restrict it coming out slower. If everybody did that on Ogden, that'd be great for everybody.
So there's no chance of any backups, because we seem to be the one.
There probably still is, I mean, what we wanna do is get rid of all that. We'd like to have everybody retain their own water. That's what the water retention does.
But I mean, what we see?
We don't know for sure. You're not gonna see it from that property. That property's not gonna give you any more trouble.
Okay.
The ones nearby that don't have this, say, I don't know, the Midas, or they don't know if they have it or not, but some of the newer businesses have it, the old ones do not have it.
Okay.
You'd like to have everybody to have it.
Mr. Chairman, that's the advantage of a commercial development under modern stormwater zoning requirements. We now have to control the release of the water in a systematic fashion with pre-engineered calculations. You can't just let it sheet flood and flood out the neighbors' basements to the south. This will certainly help the problem. It may not eliminate it completely, as you have said, it will certainly improve current conditions.
It won't tax the system anymore.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you. Who next will speak, please?
Okay.
Okay, I'm glad there's a microphone, because my voice doesn't carry very well. I'm Carrie Brugel. I live on 507 Blackhawk. I've lived there for four years. And first, I would like to say that although I'm three houses away from the house that their, the builders would like to rezone as commercial, that's currently a residential lot, I did not receive one of the notices, one of the 35 notices. And there was also something I would like to clarify from their presentation. Am I correct that you're saying that you expect 80% of the traffic to this business to enter and exit off of Ogden? Is that correct?
To come from Ogden, not to come from south. So to come from Ogden south, not to come from Chicago north.
Okay, but how many cars will actually enter your business off of Ogden, not Richmond or Blackhawk?
Mr. Priest?
Six hundred. Okay. What can I speak?
Okay, so 600 cars a day, you're saying, will enter either, enter the store premises from either Blackhawk or Richmond?
From Ogden.
Does anyone understand what they're saying?
Yes, there's 600 cars are gonna come down Ogden and either turn down the half-block of Richmond or Blackhawk. 150 are going to come north on either Richmond or Blackhawk. The total is 750.
But all will enter either from Blackhawk or Richmond, none will enter off of Ogden?
That's correct.
Okay. That was what our understanding was from the first meeting, and that didn't sound like that from the presentation earlier. You know, the presentation made it sound pretty insignificant, you know, this traffic on Blackhawk and Richmond, but they've pretty much said it's a deal killer if they can't have these entrances and exits. So why would it be insignificant for us if it's insignificant, if it is significant for them to have it in order to have this business here? I ask you to think about that. You know, I don't oppose this project. I shop Westmont. As I said, I'm a Westmont citizen, and if this business can bring, you know, good quality products to our environment and revenue to our city, that's great, we don't oppose it. All we ask is that they don't route their commercial traffic through our residential streets. Commercial streets are designed for commercial traffic. Residential streets are designed for residential traffic. Most of the businesses, or almost all of the businesses on Ogden, use Ogden as their entrance and exit points. There's no reason for this biggest insurgence into a Westmont neighborhood. This is precedent-setting. This isn't necessary. They claim that the reason that they want to do this is new urbanism design. And I did some research on new urbanism design. And picture in your mind kind of a Norman Rockwell, Thomas Ginkade scene with a village hall, narrow streets with slow traffic. The emphasis is on walkable, self-contained neighborhoods, green space. It is not about routing increased traffic to neighborhoods. Let's be honest here. What they want to do is they want to have their target market, Clarendon Hills and Hinsdale, to be routed through the neighborhood of Westmont. You know, one of the main tenets of new urbanism design is decreased automobile dependence. They talk about walking and bicycling everywhere. So decreased automobile dependence is a main tenet of new urbanism design. What they're talking about is a parking lot for 160 people and valet parking. How does that jive? It doesn't. And if you want, no matter what you want to argue about, the amount of traffic, it is increasing the traffic. While other neighborhoods are adding one-way streets and to make their neighborhoods safer for children, why should Westmont be a neighborhood that increases the traffic in any way, shape, or form? This shouldn't even be considered. Because I didn't get the notice timely, and I just heard about it slightly before the last meeting, and I wasn't able to attend, I would like to briefly talk about what I feel are the negative effects on our neighborhoods. And we did already talk about increased traffic, so I won't cover that anymore, except to say that whether, how many cars you want to argue about, it is increased traffic. And increased traffic really leads to decreased safety. You know, children don't play on commercial streets. In our neighborhoods, they cross the street to visit a friend, they play football in the front yard, they may chase a wayward football, we back out of our driveways. Whether you talk about how much increased traffic, that is hurting the safety of our streets. And what is, you know, what does this increased revenue mean to you when it could lead to a harm of a child? I'd like to read to you a couple of statistics. This is from the Community Environmental Defense Services. Between 1986 and 1995, approximately 600 pedestrians were killed each of those years by automobiles, and 55% of those fatalities occurred on neighborhood streets, and we want to add more traffic on our neighborhood streets. For every pedestrian killed by a car, another 15 were injured. I hope you don't want to have that on your heads. Decreased property values. Someone at the last meeting, from what I heard, stood up and said that there was no study to show that increased traffic led to decreased property values. Well, you know what, there's no study to show that if I drop a rock on this podium, that it's gonna make a noise, but we all know that it's going to, don't we? If it was your property, and you knew that there was gonna be increased traffic, and you knew that you were gonna see a parking lot out your back window, wouldn't you be worried about your decreased property values? Of course you would be. And I did find a study on this, actually. It's called Adjusting House Prices for Intra-Neighborhood Traffic Differences. It's from the Appraisal Journal. I'd like to read just a few brief things from it. Real estate appraisers have long recognized the effect of traffic on residential property value. When valuing residential property, an appraiser must consider the effects local neighborhood traffic may have on the property. Even though every street has some traffic, it is the level of traffic that can directly affect the values of single-family homes. And they concluded, intra-neighborhood traffic is a factor in the valuation of residential property, and the market makes price adjustments for increased traffic flow. Therefore, an appraiser should consider the traffic effect when valuing residential property. In the sample described in the study, the traffic effect is a negative one, implying that the detracting effects of increased traffic, for example, odor, noise, dust, danger, outweigh the positive effects of access. This is also from the Community Environmental Defense Services that we're working with. Some car, truck, and bus traffic on neighborhood streets is a necessity given our current lifestyle. However, this does not mean that the streets must accommodate ever-increasing amounts of traffic. As traffic volumes increase, the safety of our streets decline, along with property value, air quality, and the quiet we enjoy in our homes. And this is from Realtor.com. How is property value determined? Keep in mind future zoning plans. A home may have a higher value when it's first built and has green space views, but if zoning allows for those green space views to turn into a business 10 years down the road, you can expect the home's value to decrease when the view changes to delivery trucks and parking lots. That sounds pretty familiar with this project. I know that the city of Westmont is seeing dollar signs, but if it doesn't work out for this business, another business will come, one that will not devalue our neighborhoods, one then that will not risk the safety of our children. And I'm not saying that this isn't salvageable yet. I think it can still work if they will respect how we feel about this traffic, if they will use the road, Ogden, that is designed to handle their commercial traffic, and stay away from our residential streets. I would support this project, I would shop there. So please consider that. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I asked you once before, let's not have any of this either for or against, okay? Let's be a little bit more professional.
Hi, I have a cold, I'm sorry. My name is Kim Wagner, I live at 508 North Richmond Avenue. My husband and I have lived there for eight years, but my husband's been a resident of Westmont his whole life. I've heard a lot about traffic, as we all have, and at the last meeting, I was very upset with what I heard because I live there on Richmond, and I see the traffic. And these studies are so wrong, it's crazy. We actually did a count of our own, and I know it's not all fancy and scientific and give you all these fancy numbers that everybody wants to hear, how it's not gonna affect anything. But on Saturday, October 16th, from 12:25 to 12:55 in the afternoon, we are talking about 30 minutes, there was 27 cars. That's an average of a car every one minute, basically. Now, the following Saturday, on the 23rd, from 9 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock in the morning, which is probably a Saturday morning where most people are gonna go do their shopping at a store like this, there was 101 cars in one hour on Richmond, not Blackhawk. That is a car every 35.64 seconds. That was just Saturdays. So we decided to look at a weekday. Tuesday, from 4:40 in the afternoon to 5:25 in the afternoon, there was 84 cars, that's an average of a car every 32.14 seconds. On the 26th, there was a two-hour window. I and my husband actually got up at 5:30 in the morning and watched out our window until 7:30 in the morning, two hours. 250 cars passed my house. That is a car every 28.8 seconds. Now you're speaking of a side street that does not have sidewalks for our children. I am appalled that we are even considering a project of this magnitude without considering sidewalks, at least on the, right there on Richmond, to protect our children. There is, I'm gonna need help from the neighbors here, how many kids are right there on that corner?
There's over 20 children, just one.
Right on that, right on that corner, you're talking about 20 kids.
By the time, was this abnormally high count, did you say, these 200?
That was a Tuesday morning, from 5:30 in the morning till 7:30 in the morning. Mind you.
Mr. Priest, what are the hours of your operation?
7:00 AM to 9:00 AM.
Now, the other thing I don't think that these traffic studies are taking into account is, they're also going to be trying to cater to the residents of Hinsdale and Clarendon Hills. Now, the problem with Hinsdale and Clarendon Hills, there are not very many easy ways to get onto Ogden. So what does that mean? All of that traffic is gonna come down Chicago Avenue, and where are they gonna come up? The very first street possible, which is Richmond Avenue, because Blackhawk is then next. You're going to end up turning Richmond into Cass Avenue by the time you're done, Cass Avenue, or Blackhawk before this is over. My biggest concern is this. What I don't understand is if these, if this business is trying to monopolize on Ogden Avenue, the traffic of, I'm sorry, the traffic of Ogden Avenue, why aren't the entrances on and off Ogden? Leave the side streets alone. I don't understand this. One of the members, the board members last meeting, had proposed the idea of spinning the building around so that what we see is facing the residents would actually be facing out towards Ogden, and put your entrances there. I don't understand why this is not a feasible resolution. Now, we as residents are obvious, you know, we put any business there, there's going to be an increase in traffic, we accept that, but you're inviting it more if it's on these side streets. And it's appalling, and one of these kids gets hurt, or God forbid, killed, I wouldn't want to be one of you guys who have to sleep at night, who have to make this vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Reynolds, and I live at 519 North Warwick Avenue. I've been in my house for a little over 10 years. So I really have no vested interest in this, but I also offer a somewhat unique perspective because it was probably five years ago, I was in this room when West Suburban Vet Clinic was trying to move from their location. was trying to move from their location on Ogden to their current location on Warwick Avenue. And before I go into the specifics of that, I really like West Suburban Vet Clinic. They're a great neighbor, their landscaping is beautiful, the people there are nice, you know, gotta love pets. So I have nothing against them, but the same type of issues that we were talking about several years ago are the same issues that are being brought up today. And as I have lived there over the last five years, the property values and traffic have been an issue. We've tried to move a couple times with my job over the past five years, and we weren't able to sell our house. And there's obviously a lot of variables that comes into play when selling a house, but what we heard time and time again from our real estate agent, are people are concerned, rightly or wrongly, about the vet clinic across the street. It's very pretty, it's very nice, but there's people that are coming in and out of there at all points in time. And I think the other aspect here that can't be minimized, as was stated before, is the traffic coming and going from the south. So you may or may not be familiar with the West Suburban Vet Clinic, but they actually have a sign that says, "No right turn going south" as an exit there. But I can guarantee you, I would say a minimum of 25% of people leaving there do go south, even though it's forbidden. And I don't pretend to know all the details of this particular project, but I don't even think that that's a consideration, the no right turn going south on Richmond or Blackhawk. But I know that that has been a concern from our perspective as well in that increased traffic. So from a properties values perspective, the increased traffic, right or wrong, whether it's 5% or 10%, there's a perception, right or wrong, that it will increase and that will decrease the property values. And, you know, from my perspective, I saw that play out where I live. And then the traffic going south will be a concern. And I think the lady that said it before, with the Hinsdale and Claritin Hills target market, that will make the streets of Westmont traffic go up. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Kirish. Live at 508 North Blackhawk in Westmont. I'm a 41-year resident of this community. Been in my home, this current home in Westmont here, in 12 years. Prior to that, I was in the south of the tracks. I want to touch on some of these issues that you've heard a little bit about, but just to spread a little more light on them. I'm just kind of curious, because, you know, the Hinsdale's coming up a couple times here. And I believe this project went before the Hinsdale Board prior to us. Is that correct? No? There was no talks with Hinsdale?
There was nothing before the Village Board. It was a different process.
It was my understanding the project was shot down before, because you guys couldn't come to an agreement, no?
Completely suspended.
All right. Because I thought there was an interest in buying some property on Ogden.
There was a litigation.
There was up and down Ogden Avenue.
Okay.
Naperville, Westmont, Downhill Grove, Hinsdale, Legrange, looking at sites all over Chicago.
Okay. I, you know, I just, I want us to just not lose sight. You know, it's great, and I don't think anybody in this room opposes the business coming into the town and staying in a commercial setting, Ogden Avenue. It's, it's just, when it's encroaching into a residential neighborhood, that's where the, the, the line is, you know, is crossed. You know, I touched a little bit on the flooding. I know the underground, pardon me, storage is a good thing. However, when you build a home or a business, you start from the foundation up. And here, you know, we, I don't know if our vision is clouded with this, it seems to be a very nice business coming in and with a lot of money, but the infrastructure to handle that area, like Warwick and Blackhawk, which is underwater, I mean, I stood before this board, before some homes were built across the street from me. Great neighbors, love them, love the neighborhood, but it's gotten worse. And I pleaded that to get the storm water correct, and they assured me it would, and it did not happen. My pictures, I was going to bring, like Mary did, I never got them back from Christopher Burke. I mailed them, or gave them to them at their village's request of my street underwater numerous times. The 100-year flood is over. I mean, this is, it's beyond that. These, this is, it's not an 100-year flood where this is happening. We have an infrastructure problem that needs to be addressed before we continue to build more, almost like a moratorium you did on Warwick. The code, you know, they've mentioned a couple times about having codes when it comes to the capacities. I mean, the 10-inch line on Trobe's at capacity, period, it is. You see the results of that in those heavy storms. However, you know, the underground storage has to be over and above the code, because the codes don't work. You gotta be over and above, you gotta pad that. You know, when Vince opened up, he mentioned some issues that he had thought that they had did their part to address, but lighting and security lighting wasn't a huge one, but they really hammered that in because they're easy fixes. They chose not to meet with us as a group. That says a lot right there. One of the biggest things, there was part of that, was a right turn only on a Blackhawk. I didn't hear it directly from their, any of their partners, but I hear that there's no way that they would have this deal move forward if it is a right turn only. I don't know if that's true, but it wasn't addressed, wasn't even talked about, and that's a huge problem. I think, I think it was Kim that said about Ogden Avenue. IDOT, if I understand this correctly, told us no, or told them no, they can't have the entrances on Ogden Avenue. Is that correct?
I won't speak for the developers. I don't believe that's correct.
You don't believe that? So they could?
Yes.
They could, okay.
So the alternative to that would be to move the building, let's say, for example, if this were a car dealership instead of a grocery store. The idea would be to move the building to the back of the property so that you could have your display area and park the vehicles in the front, visible from Ogden Avenue, to attract the customers off of Ogden Avenue. Do you really want the building moved to the back half of the property where the deliveries get real close to your front door then?
I can't speak for everybody, but I think the majority of this room would say yes, Ben.
Cars starting, I think, or the two trucks.
Yeah, I mean, you got auto mechanics behind it, you know, at the car dealers, too. Well, I'm glad to hear that that's a possibility, because that's something that should be explored. I was under the impression that I'd have told them, no, they could only have one entrance, and that would limit their, their access. And I would hate to think that if they chose to take on the residents of the area versus IDOT, it's, you know, we're getting the brunt of that. And if it's such an issue with the cars, you know, if I got these numbers right, 157 cars on Blackhawk addition, 52 cars on Richmond, then why is it so significant to have those entrances? Just eliminate them. I mean, these folks paid a lot of money, I mean, I'm probably two houses down from the new entrance, it's going to be the proposed entrance, on Blackhawk. And the folks that have their homes directly in front of that area and a butt next to them, these are very nice homes, and mine's nice, too, but there's a lot nicer than mine. And it's going to impact them tremendously as well as me. And I just ask that, you know, when you're, when you take your vote, you keep that in mind, you know? We're vested residents of this area, and we want the project to go, but just keep it in the Ogden Avenue. Entrances, just keep it commercial. We can't encroach into the residential neighborhood, so, thank you.
You do realize that the property that they own could be used for parking right now with a special use permit?
I do realize that. That's a, and the residential, they don't own lots, is, I thought that was a contingent on this project going. You own the lots on Blackhawk and Richmond?
Whether they own the lots or not, presuming, we would be presuming that they would be buying the lots, they could use those lots for parking with a special use permit.
I understand that. That's the way it's written now.
So the encroachment could be there no matter what. You understand us?
I do. But we, we disagree with it wholeheartedly. And I've heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission in the past, a lot of their rules need to be amended because of past issues. You learn from your mistakes.
Well, that's something that has to be done at the village level that-
Correct.
That's not our purview.
So maybe we're putting the cart before the horse. I don't know, but it's something we need to think about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Lonnie. My wife and I live at 514 Blackhawk Drive with our two daughters, who are ages 12 and seven. We've lived there about 15, we've lived there about 15 years. I think Mr. Priest talked earlier about the meetings we had, and just wanted to walk through a little timeline we had. On the 21st Thursday evening, I know Jim and about 11 or 12 of the residents, we met at Knopka's house, had a discussion about what we were looking at here and what we thought were some ideas. And Jim was going to present those ideas as a group. The very next day, we already had a meeting scheduled at 8:00 AM with Mr. Priest and Mr. Dott. We had a very pleasant conversation and talked about what was, you know, some ideas that they had, which I see they've shown here. And we made plans to meet on Wednesday evening at 6:30 on the 27th. On the, on the Sunday, the 24th, Jim called me and told me that they didn't want to meet as a group, they thought it was more productive to meet individually. And I disagreed with that, and I told Jim that I would call them on Monday, and cancel our meeting on Wednesday, and also told Mr. Priest we would not meet with him until he met with the larger group. They were concerned about lots of people talking, but, you know, we would have had about 12, maybe it might have been 14 or 15 at the, at the bigger meeting. But the idea was to have Mr. Allington be our spokesman and present some of the ideas there as the groups, it wouldn't be 15 people yelling at you.
Sir, if you would, would you please face the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because the audience at home cannot hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. But I just wanted to bring up that timeline, because I didn't really give the reasons for why, you know, we decided not to meet. One thing, I did go and read the traffic study a couple weeks back, and had a few questions. I noticed, at least reading the study, maybe it's changed now, everyone's talked about the fact that the trucks would come in and either go back out on Ogden or leave onto Richmond. It does say, at least in the traffic study when I read it, delivery trucks would enter via the drive on Ogden Avenue and then back into the dock. Exiting trucks would be directed back onto Ogden to the east or to access on Blackhawk and north to the traffic signal at Ogden. So the study was saying that they're going onto Blackhawk. I don't know, has that changed? Sorry. And the study's been redone, or there's been an amendment to it? Is that with the city? I mean, with the village?
I believe the gentleman has shown, Mr. Priest has shown, that the delivery trucks will exit south through the parking lot to Richmond and then proceed north.
He said that earlier, but I didn't know, I just said, this is what I read in the study.
I mean, that's what we're going by, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure of that. I did also, I was reading through some of the details of the traffic studies. I'm somewhat familiar with traffic analysis since I have developed, managed the development of several nuclear power plant license applications, and we hire a traffic study firm, traffic engineers to do traffic studies for us for the emergency plans for construction and during operations, which the number, about a traffic added is about similar to what they're adding here. I noticed that the peak hour in the evening, which is what, about, excuse me a second, let's see, what is that, 4:00 to about 5:45, beginning about 4:45 is the peak. I noticed that the, at least when I was going through it, that the, there was no left turn, you were not assuming any left turn traffic onto Blackhawk from Ogden Avenue. It doesn't seem like people would, I mean, people have been on that street from 4:00 to 6:00. I don't think you can make a left-hand turn at Richmond. So I wasn't sure that the study was showing correctly, you know, people going to the light and making a left onto Blackhawk and then into the, into the grocery store. I don't know if that had changed or not.
Why don't you go on and respond to all these questions? Is that all right with you, Mr. Chairman?
Please, yes.
All at once, or would you-
Yes.
That's fine.
Just keep track of what you want to say.
I also noticed, I guess during this time period, when existing during the peak evening hours, it looked like there was about 65 trips going north, you know, 30 going straight, 20 taking a right, 15 taking a left. And it appeared that when the thing is built, that during these peak hours, there would be about, there would be 65 turning on during this peak evening time and going north. So basically, that's a doubling of the traffic at this point in time.
Which streets are you referring to, sir?
I'm referring to Blackhawk Drive, I'm sorry. Going north on Blackhawk and then coming out of the grocery store and going north. There's 65 trips doing that. And there's about 65 going south, and it was approximately, again, a doubling, I think it was maybe a little bit less. So I was just curious about that. It was, there was a doubling of traffic, and it appears, you know, when we talk about the full amount of traffic during the day, this time period's when you're doubling it. Also, another issue on this thing was, I guess from the last meeting, they said that the, they just did a count, a physical count, or someone had a count, a couple people counting the traffic. As I recall, and do, involved with some of these studies, Blackhawk Drive, you might do a physical count, but something like Ogden, you do an automatic count with meters, you know, the wires across the road, or some other device to automatically count the traffic so you had a more accurate count, because there's quite, obviously quite a bit of traffic on Ogden Avenue. These are just a few of the, these are just the questions I had on the traffic study that, you know, if you could address, it'd be great. One other item that I had, I think some guy had mentioned earlier that, Mr. Priest, you know, he had, there was no respect given to him for the last one. I don't think that was true. I thought, you know, he was a very upstanding guy. I guess you were a sales manager for Bold House for a few years, you worked for 16 years, like you said before. I think he's been really respectful during all this. And Mr. Dott used to be the chairman of the board of Bold House Farms and president and CEO, and he's obviously a very competent individual when it comes to these types of businesses.
Might I ask what this, you're-
No, no, I just wanted to know, as you said, the other three partners were here, and I'm just curious if they could introduce themselves, because we've never met them before.
Be happy to. This is Phil Stewart. Nice meeting you. And Brett for Kite.
Oh, hi. Just was wondering, that's all. I noticed you guys, you do this thing with, you know, you had done the, basically on the wholesale side of the business, now on the retail side of the business. I did notice, I guess on September 13th, you had a meeting with the Downers Grove Planning Board for putting in an auto service business on Ogden Avenue at 212 Ogden Avenue, near the, right across the side street from-
Excuse me, sir, but-
I'm just wondering, how's that tied into this?
Would you please-
Yeah, this business, now we're doing this.
Listen to me, will you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's getting late. We've discussed many things before.
Yeah.
What these gentlemen have discussed with any other village, any other entity, is not any concern of ours.
All right, that's fine, I'm sorry.
It doesn't have any concern whatsoever what we're going to vote on tonight.
Okay.
So please stick to what we're going to vote on, will you?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. That's basically all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We're starting to hear traffic, 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 and to be quite honest, it's getting talked to death. I'd like to hear something new.
I'm Jane Grinning. I live at 510 Blackhawk, so we live kitty corner to the empty lot on Blackhawk, and wish I could have come to some of the other meetings, but some of us do work in the evenings. They made a reference to our house values, so I've been asking some realtors, and the response that I've received from the realtors that I've talked to has been that if a business comes in and has their driveway on the residential street, that will bring the value down. If the business is there, but they would access through Ogden, your house has a much better chance of retaining the value that you have into it. We've lived in this house for 13 years. I have lived in this area for 55-plus years. That's as close as I'm going to reveal on that. years. That's as close as I'm going to reveal on that. And if I had a choice of seeing the entryway or the back of a building in the parking lot, I'd go for the back of the building in the parking lot any day. A lot of us have a lot of our retirement wrapped up in our houses. When we moved onto Blackhawk, it wasn't a feeder street. I don't believe I'm using the correct terminology there, but it turned into that. That's great. You know, we're growing. That has to happen. And then we got the light at the end of the block, and that, you know, that's good. That had to happen, too. But I think at some point, you have to say enough is enough. I don't think we're, we're not against the business coming in. It sounds nice. It sounds good. But we want the entrance on Ogden so we can retain the value of our homes. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Kelly Circo, and I live at 512 North Richmond in Westmont. The house has been in our family forever. The first, well, since probably when I was third grade, I moved into Westmont. In any case, I spoke last time about, because our house is directly south of the residential property that they want to make commercial. And I talked about that last time, about my issue of being so close to the property line to ours. But why I'm here today is, as I came right from work, and I work for Jewel Osco. And everybody talks about that they're going to be coming in, the sales tax is going to be increased for the village, which, which is great. I mean, I think any business needs to be in there. An empty business isn't going to do anything for Westmont. But the sales tax that they're talking of the increase is that, yes, you will see that from that business. But you will see a decrease in the sales tax that you're getting from Jewel Osco because they are going to take some of our business. I am an employee of Jewel Osco. I am concerned that once our sales go down, could my job be in jeopardy? Yes, they're hiring 120 residents. Am I going to be the next one, Westmont resident collecting unemployment? Because I'm worried about losing my job at an established company in your town. Now, we talk about established residents and how much, how many years we've been in the community. There's established businesses that have been in the community, too. Nature's Best is going to lose business because of, it's a direct competitor of theirs. Jewel Osco's going to lose business. As they said, nobody shops at one store anymore. And we've seen it firsthand in our own industry. And that is true. But the increase that you're expecting, and you really should consider that you may be getting an increase from them, but you're going to be getting a decrease from an established company already in town. So what the village is going to see is that going to outweigh each other. And the whole idea about the job market, some jobs, they'll make jobs, but then other companies, maybe employees from Nature's Best, maybe employees from Jewel Osco will lose their jobs. So is that going to offset one another? So I just wanted you to consider that, too.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Jur. I live at 410 North Richmond. I've lived there for 13 years. I think that, you know, I know that you commented that you're tired of hearing about the traffic problems, but I think that the one main issue that I've heard from everyone so far has been the concerns about traffic.
My concern, sir, when I said I was tired of hearing about it, we are talking the same subject, last meeting and this meeting, over and over and over. You can only say the same words so many times.
Well, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that what we haven't heard, and you know, we talk about, you know, and nobody's saying that they don't want to see the business in town of Westmont. What we're saying is that we'd like to see...
Lady just did.
Well, you know, but there's going to be some business there, and we understand that. But what we're saying is that, that what we're, our major concern is that the traffic is going to be coming on our streets. And our street, Richmond, is not designed for high traffic. I mean, we've made some improvements to Blackhawk, and I don't want to say this, you know, because I know that there are people that, on Blackhawk, have the same concerns that we do. But, you know, that's, that street has been widened to three, you know, essentially three lanes, so that there is some concessions. On Richmond, we have cars, you know, the only extra parking on the street is on the street, and that literally takes away one lane of traffic. So now you've got all these cars trying to feed through one lane of traffic. The other thing is, we talked about the trucks exiting onto Richmond, which doesn't have a stoplight. So if you can imagine that you're going to have a truck now trying to turn out onto Ogden on a busy Ogden Avenue, that's not a good situation either. And what's going to happen, too, is that there's, it's going to increase the amount of time just to be able to get onto Ogden. Like the other gentleman was saying here about cars trying to turn left, if you're going to push cars out onto Richmond and then now try and turn left onto Ogden, it can't be done. There's not enough, there's not a left turn lane there. So anybody that wants to turn right has to wait until this person that's turning left clears. And that's not an easy thing to do. You know, the other concern is people, you know, just imagine that you live at where I live, 410 North Richmond, and I'm going to drive to Hinsdale. If I'm going to go to the center of Hinsdale, I'm not going to go up on Ogden Avenue to get to Hinsdale. And that's the same situation with the people coming from Hinsdale and Claritin Hills. They're not going to go up to Ogden Avenue. It's not accessible for them. They're going to come right through Chicago and come right up our streets. So these are our concerns. These are what we're asking you to listen to. We're not concerned, we're not trying to say, don't bring the business here. We're saying, design the business so it works in our community. That's what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Want to hear Traffic Control, City says? The Traffic Act? Do you want to answer any of that? We've gone...
Yes. If, Ms., if you would hold, I think it's about time that we hear a little bit of a clarification, rebuttal, whatever, concerning this traffic.
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
One thing, if I, if I may lead you a little, could you please address the hours of the delivery trucks?
Early, early morning.
I understand.
And we're anticipating one to three deliveries a day before 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock. They want to get there very early in the morning.
I would say they'll be coming between 4 and 6:00.
In the morning.
If you could?
Yeah.
Okay.
4 to 6:00 in the morning. 4 to 6:00, maybe 7 o'clock in the morning, early, 2 to 3 deliveries a day.
So these delivery trucks are not going to be on the street, in essence, before anybody's really up in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's not like, and I, we've been through this with the owner, because I always ask these questions. Coke, beer, Pepsi trucks? No, they're not coming. That's not, they're not delivering those type of, they're not storing those type of merchandise there. Their trucks are self-contained. They come from their warehouse. They deliver their own trucks. They're essentially the size of a UPS, FedEx truck, what we call a single-unit 30 truck, an SU 30. They're not big 16-wheelers. It's not that type of operation. So I think that's important. Because I think the gentleman raised an interesting question, and I agree with him. But I think that, that's why we designed it that way. Something has appeared to me, and I, look, we do the best we can to estimate traffic flows. People from Claritin Hills, people from Hinsdale and so on, who are currently using Chicago Avenue, who currently understand the streets system and don't want to use CAS, don't want to go out to Ogden, for whatever reasons, are already there on the streets using those for their shopping trips. Will there be a couple more? Yeah. But remember, we took the traffic generated by this, whether it's 1,000 or 1,100 a day, divided by the hours of operation. We looked at peak hours, and we assigned 15 and 5% on Richmond. So 20% of that all went to the south or came from the south. Those would account for, the people, that I think I'm hearing correctly, what about the people in Claritin Hills? What about the people in Hinsdale who are going to use the back door? They are accounted for in that 15, 20% of people that, and there are people that are in that 3,500 cars a day or 1,000 cars a day. By the way, the woman that counted traffic, I tabulated her numbers. They weren't too dissimilar from what we estimated to be on Richmond. Because if you look at an hour, it generally, peak hour generally represents about 10% of the day. Generally represents about 10% of the day. So two things. The people that are traveling from that area already know that street system and are using Blackhawk. In addition to that, by virtue of us being there, we added another 20%. 5 on Richmond, 15 on Blackhawk. Because Blackhawk is the easier street to use, it's been improved, it's got a signal. That's a street if I was using an alternate, I would use. The other thing that has to be mentioned, and it's not an option, if there were no drives on either of those streets, people coming from that area anyways would travel those streets to get to Ogden to turn in. And I think that's an important factor. Those drives are very important. There is a drive on Ogden for both deliveries and accessible by customers. And the drives on Richmond and on Blackhawk, obviously located at the northern end of the streets. But I want to make it clear to the commission, when I talked about distribution of new traffic to the south, that was south of those driveways. That little link between the driveways and Ogden Avenue will experience more traffic, that link. But south of there was the new traffic I was talking about. I don't, I, I think, and I took a lot of notes, I think I addressed, the gentleman that talked about the turning movements and the numbers and so on, be happy to sit down with him and go through the numbers. I don't think we have to go through all the tiny little 6 turn here and 10 turn here and so on unless you want me to. It's in the report. Any, anything, questions or anything, Mr. Chairman?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you.
Repeat. Excuse me, Ms., but you spoke already. Let's, let...
I just wanted to add one thing, just to correct him. If somebody were to come up, they're not going to, they're not going to come down Richmond if the entrances are on and off Ogden. On account of the fact, if they're going to do that, they would have to make a left onto Ogden in order to make another left into the store. They're not going to try to make a left onto Ogden. If anything, worst case, they're going to travel down to Blackhawk and use the lights. That's not necessarily a good thing either, but it does help filter down some of the traffic. Richmond does not have the capacity to handle that traffic. And nobody thought about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Donald, and I'll sign in in just a moment. I don't want to waste your time with that for just this moment. What I wanted to bring to your attention is there's some other options we may not have been looking at. Now, my understanding is IDOT does not really want to make more cuts on Ogden. Correct me if I'm mistaken about that. But here's the thing, there's at least two cuts already there with the lots we're talking about. One for the Muffler's Lot, the Muffler Company Lot, and the other for Old Plank Road. There is a cut going into that large parking lot right now, directly off of Ogden. That gives you an in and out. It's an option to consider, therefore taking your entrances away from your side streets. And as you did mention, if somebody is entering from those, those entrances on Ogden into the parking lot, they're not going to be coming off of Richmond. They may not even be that interested in being on Blackhawk. They may very well use Ogden as their main transportation routes. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is I do currently live on Richmond. I have a small grandchild. And my daughter was very succinct in her concerns when she said to me, "Mom, I don't want my daughter to be a speed bump." She's deeply concerned because we are right there as they would turn onto Ogden, not expecting to be in a particularly residential area right away, but there we are. I don't want my granddaughter to be a speed bump either. And I am sure that if any of you lived on those two streets, you would have these very same concerns. So I'm wondering if there's a way to use those entrances that are already on Ogden and dispose of the entrances exits on the side streets. I'll ask you to please give that some consideration. And perhaps our engineer could also assist us with that. The other thing I wanted to mention, we all drive Chicago Road from time to time, as you well know. And I think we really do need to take into account the travel habits of our neighbors in these neighboring communities. In Hinsdale and Claritin, it's very easy to come down Chicago Road because it crosses over the expressway. Okay? Unfortunately, when you do come down Chicago Road, remember that there are two schools on that road. Two elementary schools there. So we want to be very, very aware of that as people are driving through. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Apkenorth, and I live at 507 Blackhawk. And my wife and I relocated to the Westmont community about four and a half years ago from the Washington DC area. We moved to the Westmont area because we thought it was a very good community to establish ourselves. We could, we had other choices, but we chose Westmont. Okay? You know, the developers are promising jobs and revenue, and I don't think any of us are against that. The economy's bad, and we are for that. What we are against, though, is a lot of the issues that have already been brought up, the traffic, the storm sewer, et cetera. And I'm not going to revisit that, okay? But I do have one question of Commissioner Richards. Let's let me ask as far as the traffic study. The comment was made, there's going to be no entrances on Ogden for basically the patrons. Basically, it would be just, just the truck traffic. However, the numbers that were just stated tonight is that the residential traffic on Richmond would go up maybe by 80 cars. The traffic on Blackhawk could go up by 120 cars. That's 200 cars. I work with numbers all day long, so I'm just having a little bit fuzzy math here. If we know there's going to be roughly 750 cars going in and out, that's 750 more that have to be accounted for in Richmond and Blackhawk because there's no entrances, entrance in Ogden. So they all are going to be on Blackhawk and Richmond. Yes, they may not go all the ways up and down the street, but they're all going to be on that street, turning right or turning left, slowing down the traffic. Okay? So if they want to reaccount for those, I'd be glad to hear that. You know, and really should concern all the Westmont residents, not just us, is the statement made by Mr. Kimball at the last meeting. Now, I know Mr. Kimball's job is Development Director, so he's a little biased regarding this. So I understand that, I'm not picking on you. But the comment was made, basically drawing a line across the residence, and everything north of that, he felt was fair game. Fellow Westmont residents, this is precedent-setting. Whatever is past regarding this will determine what happens with your neighborhood, and your neighborhood could be next. So the bottom line is, this is very important to everybody within Westmont because it could happen to them. You know, in regards to the jobs and tax revenue, is there any guarantee that's actually going to happen, that they're going to be able to produce more jobs and tax revenues? Is there any guarantees? There is no guarantees. And I actually have a study that was completed in the Chicago area where a, where a business went into a community was promising increased jobs and tax revenue. What the study ended up determining is that actually, very much like the individual I just said from Jewel, is what ended up happening is other local businesses' tax revenue went down, and they actually ended up laying off people. So the total net increase for jobs and tax revenue for that community was nothing. And that was what was accepted and why they built there. And in the end, there ended up to be no net increase of the community. So as the comment was made, how many jobs is this going to cost in Nature's Best and Jewel? I think we know the answer, that there will definitely be some effect. So you need to take that into account as well.
Would you care to have that study entered into the record?
I will. Push, I... You know, and I'm not going to touch on the traffic and the cars anymore, but I think you do have to consider this. Why, ask yourself three questions regarding the current residential area we're talking about. Why is there a business on Warwick where they, patrons are restricted from turning right into the residential area? They have to go left onto Ogden. Two, why is there a current business on Willamette where they are restricted from turning left into the residential? They have to turn right onto Ogden. Three, why is the business on the corner of Ogden and Blackhawk now restricted from also turning left in the residential? They have to turn right onto, onto Ogden. The precedent has been set, gentlemen. The village trustees have now imposed restrictions on three businesses in that same community that they have to take the business traffic to Ogden, not to the residential areas. I'm not sure why a difference would now be made for another business. And if you really add up the traffic for those three businesses I'm speaking about, it pales in comparison to the traffic these gentlemen want to route by our house. Needs to be considered. It's a very valid point. You know, and Mr. Priest had mentioned that he... You know, and Mr. Priest had mentioned that he's very confident that this would not decrease real estate values. If he's so confident, then why doesn't he put his money in the line? There was a recent lawsuit in the state of Wisconsin, very similar, where there's agreement made, where development came in, and basically the agreement was that if the housing values went down, that either the city or the developer would go along, would, would kind of make up the difference. So I guess if he's that confident, why doesn't he stand behind it and show the residents his confidence by having us all appraisals done? And if we want us all houses, it's different, then he'll pick up the tab for us. Just a comment there. Now, another thing.
I like that, too.
Imagine this, imagine you're sitting in your living room on a Saturday night, watching TV with your family. All of a sudden, a set of headlights comes in your, in your, basically your windows. Car turns right. 30 seconds later, once again, a set of headlights shines in your front living room, car turns left. That continues on for the next couple hours. Gentlemen, that's what we're talking about here. Commissioner Pill had made the comment last time regarding some of the houses on Black Hawk, that that's what's gonna happen for a few of those houses on Black Hawks when those cars leave that entranceway, and whether they go down Black Hawk to the south or Black Hawk to the north, that is the reality, what's gonna happen. Commissioner Pill, and I'm not, I'm gonna kind of paraphrase you here, I think he had mentioned, that was a deal breaker for him, just the very fact that for one resident, that would be an issue. And you know, Mr. Prince stood up here and said, we tried to talk to him, putting a few bushes up in front of a house is not gonna detract from all that, all the lights going in and out of that house. So I just don't understand how that's even a, an idea, an option. And I guess the last thing I'll make, because I'm probably using up my time here, is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know you want to go home.
Okay.
Is, you know, it's not about the money. You shouldn't base your decision upon the money, it's about the people. Ever since this has been promoted to the citizens, this has caused great anguish among me and my neighbors. If you approve this in its current format, you are gonna be destroying a neighborhood of single-family residents. Single-family residents, at a recent Board of Trustees meeting, they mentioned how they were concerned that there weren't enough single-family residents in town, and they wanted to try to promote that. Here you have in a neighborhood already that has that, and you're possibly gonna destroy it because you want to route business, business and commercial traffic through it. Think very closely about that, you're gonna ruin the neighborhood, and you're gonna ruin the lives of all the people in that neighborhood, just for some extra tax revenue.
Ruin lives?
As was mentioned, people have a lot of their money in their houses, sir. So yes, if their values of the house are gonna go down, it does ruin their life. So there is some correlation there. So, and I guess that proves a great point to me right there, and it should prove a great point to the Westmont citizens, is you don't live on our street and on our block. Therefore, you don't understand what we're going through.
I live right nearby.
Do you live exactly on our block?
I live on Willmet.
Okay, so you live close?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, that's fine. And that's fine. But I guess I would say, just kind of put yourself in our shoes and think of our situation. And like I said, we're not opposed to jobs or tax revenue, we're all for that, but it's not about the money. And my last comment is, and I'll quote Suzy Orman, financial expert, worldwide financial expert. What is her saying? Her saying is, people first, then money. People first. The people are who make up the residents of Westmont, so please play some loyalty to them, and the businesses in town are ready, and really consider deeply this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would the gentleman with the traffic study care to review some of the numbers that were discussed by the gentleman, or do you want to do it later?
I prefer if I could wait.
No problem. Please, if you would, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can I say later? Good evening, sir. I'm sorry, my name is Katie. I live in 513 Black Hawk. I just want to take your time, so I'll say later. Actually, I talked to Mr. Vince, I think he seems a very nice guy, he helped, tried to help me any way I can, because I just, I'm just right next to a parking lot. So I feel like, I just, I don't want to say ruin my life, just everything's gonna be different. I, I work in a restaurant, my husband has a restaurant business too, and my mom's in nursing homes. This location is so convenient for me, I lived there for six years. And Mr., first time Mr. Vince tried to buy my property, so they, they tried to make a parking lot, like a bigger, and I kind of, I don't want to think about it because this location, I like it. And then later, they said, they respect me, they don't want to force me, so it's okay. But they tried to help me any way they can to make me feel better. For example, my concern is like a noise, like they say open 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock. My husband come home usually very late, so he need a good night's sleep. So they tried, they helped me, so they make like six feet, the bushes or buffer, whatever, I don't know what they call. I've been asking a lot of my friends, and a lot of people say that won't help the noise. And also, my other concern is, I know, Mr. Vince, you said, there's going to have a restaurant, and you're going to sell wine and liquor, right?
Wine and beer.
And the beer? Okay, my concern is, how late you're going to serve the beer or liquor?
The hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so it will close at 9:00.
The reason I'm asking is, I, I'm in restaurant business for almost 20 years. One time, I forgot when, they say, right on Cass, I think it's Ogden and Cass, there's a restaurant called Connie's Pizza, I think. They say they have a lot of drunk, drunk people there. I don't know when, what's that happened. So that's why I'm kind of concerned, this is like in a residential area. If people left there, maybe around, they go there maybe 7:30, have drinks, and later leave. You know, if they overdrink, whatever, you know, it's kind of, I don't know how to say, I hope you understand how I feel.
I think I find it hard to believe that Connie's Pizza will let people get drunk.
I don't know how late they serve beer, that's what I heard, because we're in restaurant business, they always talking about wherever happened, happened something like people get drunk or be caught, or be caught. So that's, that's how I know. So just because I'm just right next to it, you know, so, so that's why I kind of, I feel like just high risk of kind of crime. Not necessarily, but this is my concern too, just because I'm just right next to it. And I told, all my concern to Mr. Vince, I know he's very nice, he tried to help me, but a lot of things you cannot avoid. Something you can do, but a lot of things, something you cannot. Just like I say, he's kind of cute, I think. I say a lot, no, what I want to say is, no. I say about the noise, I say people are talking, when they're walking, they can laughing, whatever, because my window's right next to it. And he said, he sounded like, say, if you can just kind of tell me which car or this that, I'm not gonna spend my time to watch which car or who, and you talk to the employee. This is not my, my life. You know, just because too close. So that's why I, I cannot imagine like in the future, because I've been there six years, everything seems okay, fine. And also, my question, just like the other people, residence, residential is residential, business is business, why mixed? I don't understand. I like the print, I mean, the project, everything beautiful, but you just can't involve the residential area, that's, that's the problem. Seriously, that's just the problem. So, you know, I, and also like the other stuff people already mentioned, and the other thing, I'm just kind of curious, do you think you can open the store 8 o'clock? Or maybe not?
We're not intending to.
You're not intending to, okay. Still, the concern is the noise, just because a lot of times, we think it's one thing, the reality is the other thing. Because I'm in the restaurant business for so long, so I know a lot of stuff, but when you're thinking it's this, when you actually happen, it's totally different. So that's why, when he told me, I kind of feel okay, but the more I think of it, the more I feel like, I don't feel secure, I don't feel comfortable. So that's all I want to say, thank you so much.
Thank you now. The redheaded lady, you still owe me a signature?
I'll give you a signature.
I'm watching you.
I'm Ray Knopka, I live at 512 North Richmond, this is next to the house that they're gonna knock down. And I did meet with Vince, and the only thing they're doing now is they're moving that fence from the foot property line to 10 feet. The parking lot is still 22 feet from my house. So I mean, that hasn't changed any, so. And the other issue that they're talking about, these other businesses coming in, those businesses would be on the two-acre lot only, and they would enter and exit off of Ogden, they wouldn't be coming off of, off of Richmond. So that's my concern, is still the 22 feet from my house. Thank you.
22 feet from property lines, that would stop.
Is there anybody else in the public who will speak on this?
Good evening, 9:00. Larry, whoops, I'm sorry.
Excuse me if I may, but you came in, did I swear you in?
No, you did not, Chairman.
I thought you came in late, so.
Yes, I did.
You need to be sworn in.
By all means.
So I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you very much.
It's like an eagle.
Good evening, my name's Larry Forsberg. I've prepared some written comments. I serve as the Executive Director of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Going to offer a little bit different perspective here, a lot of the comments we've, we've heard tonight have kind of focused on the immediate area surrounding the proposed Westmont marketplace. I'm gonna take a look at a little bit more global perspective from an economic development standpoint. Again, I'm here at the Director of the Chamber Board of Directors, we wanted to comment on this proposed development here in the village. I was here last, at the last meeting with our Chamber President, Lorraine Debrichs. So we had the opportunity firsthand to hear, first of all, the presentation by the representatives from the Westmont Market on what they're proposing, and also an opportunity to hear some of the comments in general from the, from the public on this. So it was a great firsthand, firsthand opportunity to kind of gather some insight and information, which we went back to the Chamber Board and chaired. There's a couple of things we'd like to point out, because we know when the commissioners take a look at a project like this, you're not just looking at the project itself and the immediate neighborhood, you're also looking at the community as a whole, and it's part of your, your responsibility. One of the first things we do want to remind the commissioners is that there will be new jobs with this, with this new business. The projection is about 120. And whether it's 120 or 90 or 130, whatever that may be, in today's economy, that is huge. I mean, we have people who are losing their houses because they do not have work. And those houses are going into foreclosure, and that's having a very adverse impact on the value of homes in our community. So having jobs available in our community is huge. I mean, we saw in the election yesterday, some big dramatic shifts, and a lot of that's due to the state of the economy. The second thing is the anticipated increase in sales tax. We're looking at about a $200 to $300, excuse me, $200 to $300,000 increase in projected sales tax. And again, in these economic times, those are very critical numbers in terms of what it means to our village operations on a daily basis, and also what it means to our residents of the area in terms of what they're responsible for paying in real estate taxes. Another aspect, when you look at this particular property, I wouldn't call it a blighted property, but it's certainly definitely a property in decline, if you will. And it's about to be abandoned. And to have a vacant property there, I'm sure doesn't help property values either. The beautification of this site will definitely be an upgrade to the community overall, we strongly feel, feel and believe that. We also feel that this business will serve as an ambassador to Westmont, it's gonna be a new precedent-setting type of business. There's nothing else like this concept in the United, in the United States right now. And I think it will drive traffic to our community from off Ogden and off, from communities surrounding us, and bring in an awful lot more business. We also feel that this project's gonna enhance our village infrastructure. Right now, if you go and walk that property, you'll notice that there's a large amount of blacktop that basically runs downhill towards the south where the residents live. With the redesign of this property, and the underground storage and the above-ground storage of rainwater, they're basically going to own all the water that rain, that water that falls on that property, and will be responsible for funneling that in an appropriate manner. I would think that that's gonna have a positive impact on the flooding issues that impact that immediate area in the short term and in the long term. Last but not least, a project like this really strengthens the momentum for development in our community. I meet with my counterparts from Chambers Round New Page on a monthly basis, and they are constantly amazed at what we have going on in our community right now. We have three car dealers that are in the midst of expanding. We have a brand-new Walgreens that's gonna be opening up on Cass and Ogden. We've just opened a brand-new indoor soccer facility on 63rd Street. We're looking at this proposal, which is, again, a one-of-a-kind type of project, very unique. If you look around, not only the DuPage area, but the Chicago area, around the Midwest, you won't see that type of momentum going on anywhere. So to stifle this type of project, we have to be very cautious in when we turn things away, and how we consider these things, because these opportunities don't happen very often in a strong economy, and they're certainly not happening very often in this weak economy. So concerning those aspects, you know, looking at it from a global perspective, we truly feel that this project is an overall enhancement to the village of Westmont. And thank you for considering these options. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the time to address you this evening. I'm sure it's late, and you've heard a lot of issues, and I'm not going to cover any of those that have already been covered. First of all, I don't live in the area that this proposed development is before you this evening. My address is 509 North Park Street, Westmont. I'm to the west of the proposed development. But there's a couple of things that have concerned me, and that's why I'm here this evening. Number one, I would like to thank those who have proposed this development on their thoroughness and what they have proposed to develop this issue within Westmont. But does that make it right? I don't think so. I'm totally opposed to the project. And if you look at the people that are here, there's only one person, and that's been the Larry, who has spoken favor of what they are proposing. And I can understand from an economic perspective why that is so. But there's a couple of things that you must keep deep in your hearts when you look at this. If you look at all the people who are here in the communities, the community that you represent, you represent the people of this community and those people who live within this area. You don't represent businesses, you don't represent those economic development issues. You represent this village and the people that live here. And the quantity of people that were here when I arrived speaks for itself, and how much they are opposed to this. Do you want this development in your community if it was this close to you? I don't. It's not in my community, and I'm opposed to it, and I'm strongly opposed to it. And I think you should be opposed to it as well, because it's not in the best interest of those people that each and every one of you represent. You represent us. You don't represent the corporations that are trying to develop this. Do they want to do it on the south side? Maybe. Maybe that's a place for them. But don't go into the communities of these people who have spent their lives there. I've lived in this community since 1964 on the same street, North Park. You know how many years that is? You know how many administrations I've looked at? You know how many of these people I know? I've been before this committee before. And what you have before you is a very, very important issue. Whom do you represent? To whom are you going to be accountable to? Why? Is it tax dollars? No, it's not tax dollars, it's our community. So people in the places where we live. We live here because we want to be here. I'm not going to go into your traffic issues, that's, that's irrelevant, has nothing to do with it. What really is of importance is what do the people of this community want? How many people spoke for this issue tonight? How many? Tell me. None. Other than Larry, who is with the Chamber of Commerce, saying this can bring in dollars, you better believe it can. you better believe it can, but is that what you represent? Is that what you want? Are those the people that you want within our community? Maybe it's something that will bring jobs. It may not bring jobs. It may take jobs from other places, such as Dominix, Jules, the little store down the street that there's on the corner that says, "These are the places we're trying to sell." I don't oppose that company coming into our community. I oppose it very strongly that we tried to destroy what we have built our lives on, what these people have so strongly said, "We don't want it in our neighborhood." I don't care about the traffic patterns. They run up and down Park Street like it was a boulevard, but somehow, someway, you have to put up with that. That's not the issue. The issue is, is this what we want for our people? Is this what, are you supporting these people? What are you doing for us? What are you doing that says, "This is what we want for our community"? I disagree with Fred in what he says. I disagree with the proposal that this is what's going to be a betterment for our community. It's not. I don't care if it's a right turn, left turn, straight up in the air. That's not the issue. The issue is, how do you, the people that represent us in proposing this to our community, support the people who live here? Those people who stuffed this place and said, "We don't want it"? How many of them stood up right here and said, "Hey, this is great"? Not one. I didn't hear one person come up here tonight, and I waited till the last before I could make this speech to each and every one of you. And if you don't believe it, you don't follow it, there's something wrong with the community that we live in, because it's not what these people want. And I'm not directly affected, only from the standpoint that I've been here more years than probably some of you have even been born. Okay? And I love this community. I send all seven of my kids through the schools here. The youngest is in college at Vandercook on IIT campus, and I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of this community, but I'm not proud of what's happening right now. I'm very disillusioned with what's happening and what you're doing to this community if you approve this proposal, because it has nothing to do with what bunnies this brings in here. It has to do with the people who live here. Thank you very much.
All right, please hold it down, folks. Is there anybody else who will speak on this?
I'm not sure if there's anything else that really needs to be said after that. I didn't know Joe was coming. He was here, and we thank him for the support. I think the most important issues that were said is there were several issues that were brought up, and a lot of them touched on a lot of different things. The real bottom line is that you heard no one from Northeast Acres, where this project is going to be, stand up and say they want it in its present form. Were the residents, the homeowners, and the taxpayers who live there, "We don't want it in its present form"? I haven't heard one person say they have a problem with this business on Ogden Avenue. It's the incursion in the residential neighborhood, what some of you brought out at the last meeting, and it's the traffic, and it's the safety issues of our children. And in my case, because I'm like Joe, I'm older than sin, it's my grandchildren. So that's what we ask you to consider when you vote. The residents and the homeowners from Northeast Acres. We, unilaterally and all of us, don't want it in its present form. Please support us. Thank you.
Mr. Addington, question. Instead of the streetscape on Ogden, we're going to move the building to the back of the property. Parking lots still going to ingress and egress on Blackhawk, and it's still going to ingress and egress on Richmond. What has been gained?
Make those right turn and left turn only. If they had listened to the compromises that I was going to propose when we all got together, that was something that was going to be asked for. What I heard tonight was, you know, 100 and some cars a day is what they're talking about, and it's a deal killer if they can't turn Blackhawk into right turn only? That makes no sense.
You're talking an exit right turn only or a left turn only on Richmond?
Done deal.
Okay, what about an entrance into that parking lot? Those people are going to...
They don't have a problem with that. We have a problem with the incursion in our neighborhood. We had asked originally, and what I was originally told was that Blackhawk Drive was going to be right turn only back to Ogden. That changed. The folks on Richmond would like to have seen left turn only on Richmond. That was never proposed, but that's one of the things we were going to ask for. We can try to live with some of the rest, some of the rest of it. Some of the neighbors I had talked to and have convinced, "We'll try to get a little more buffer." You heard from Katie tonight, and she's the property right next to Blackhawk. She almost has no buffer. The canopkas at least are getting something like 20 feet to the fence. I mean, Katie doesn't, no, excuse me, 13, excuse me. I mean, Katie has no buffer from her house to where they want to put in parking. That's not right. That's the problem. It's the incursion into our neighborhoods, and it's the traffic, and our concerns as the residents and as the taxpayers of the safety of our children and grandchildren. As Joe said, I don't know if anything else is that important. And that's what we're asking you to consider. Us, the people.
Does the petitioner wish to address any of the concerns that have been raised? If not, we'll go to the commission members. Okay, we're going to close the public comment. Mr. Kimmel, would you have anything to say, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is pleased to make the following comments with regard to the overall impact of this project. I think it's been clearly demonstrated by the engineers for the petitioners that consolidating seven parcels that have never before been engineered under modern stormwater standards can only help the existing stormwater flooding situation. Will it eliminate it completely? Perhaps not. Will it improve it? I think it's clear that it will. We think that's an improvement to the infrastructure of the community and would help improve the quality of life for those residents that are constantly bothered by stormwater flooding issues in their basements to the south of this development area. Most often, when village staff talks with developers in a preliminary fashion, we're kind of left with the old adage that most developers are trying to cram 10 pounds of flour into a five-pound flour sack. They want to put too much development on a property. They're not willing to go to the expense to acquire additional parcels of land to allow their project to comfortably fit on the parcel of land that they want to develop. These developers have clearly indicated a desire and a willingness to go out and acquire additional parcels of land to make the size of parcel that they want to develop suitable to the type of development that they want to put on that property. That is indeed refreshing, and I think it shows good faith by the developers. The petitioners of their own volition, in an attempt to minimize the incursion of this development into the residential area, deliberately laid out this plan by moving the building as far to the north as they could to get the loading and unloading activity and the noise, if there's any noise from this business, as far away from the residents as possible. They were, again, trying to be considerate to the neighbors. Is there going to be some additional traffic generated by any successful development? Yes. That's a necessary evil when you get in the area of development. Should we allow another business that might compete with other businesses and take jobs from those businesses? If we say no, do we ever allow any other type of business into this town where we already have one more of those? Should we shut off all new restaurants because we've got existing restaurants in town? Do we allow no more new car dealers to come into town because we already have some, and that will take business away from them? That's the principle of the free enterprise system. We have a developer who has come before us with a well-thought-out, well-researched development plan, seeking to invest money in our community, saying, "I want to place my business in this town." We're going to provide new jobs, we're going to provide sales tax revenues, and I think this was spoken to earlier, the neighbors have all talked about tax revenues. Let's look at it from a public revenue support mechanism here. We have a development that's going to take seven parcels that, well, maybe we can't use the word blighted, but we can say they're fully depreciated. Those are parcels that have aging buildings on them that are in a somewhat dilapidated state. Can you imagine what the equalized assessed valuation will result as a result of this development of a new upscale 33,000-square-foot grocery store? Will the EAV on all of these collective properties go up 400%, 500%? If so, that starts to stabilize an eroding property tax base that is causing great pressure on our school district, our park district, our library district, and the village of Westmont. There are considerable macroeconomic benefits to this entire community, and I understand and respect the concerns of the nearby neighbors and their close neighborhood here. Nobody wants to see their neighborhood deteriorate. Nobody wants to see the safety of their neighborhood compromised. But when Mr. Sacco says that we need to consider what the people want, what do the other 26,000 people in this community who might get benefit in an economic development standpoint from this development, how do their needs weigh against the needs of the neighbors in the immediate area? That's always the $64,000 question that all building and zoning commissioners and all elected officials have to deal with. We believe that this matter should be placed in the hands of those elected officials that we have elected to these positions to make these kinds of decisions for us. The village staff strongly encourages recommendation in favor of this project. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the commissioners have done some questioning last week, but let's start over again with anything new that may have come up. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
Jim, let me go back to this meeting that never took place, and you had an agenda that you had planned to discuss. Has all those things that you were going to discuss then been discussed tonight?
None of them.
And why would that be? If everybody is here?
Well, because some of the things that we wanted to talk about was what would they be willing to work with us on, and then what would we be willing to back off on as far as our objections go? That was the, that was the real bottom line to what we had. I had convinced these 11 families that they were going to have to back off on some of the issues, whether it be leaving the driveways full access, but there were a lot of concerns. Where was the traffic going? The lighting, as Vince mentioned. One of the big issues is the reconsolidation of all seven of these lots into commercial. That's been a big concern of ours from day one. We don't want to see them fail. We want them to be successful. But if they should fail, for whatever reason, this is a business like any other business, and businesses are failing today. And if it fails, and they've done this seven-lot consolidation, that's one heck of a nice piece of property for somebody else to want to buy. And the next person who comes along may not be somebody that we want as much as a neighbor. We don't mind these folks as neighbors. What we're saying is, give a little bit. Give some concessions to us as the residents, and we'll give. We weren't given that opportunity. We were told no. Everything that you all suggested that night, whether it was giving up to 21 parking spots, not considering the lot consolidation, not doing the right turn on Blackhawk, every one of those things was discussed between myself and some of the neighbors. There was some give that might have been there. We were never given the opportunity to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. And because that meeting did not take place, I have not heard, I've heard everything from the petitioner, but I've heard nothing about what the, if anything, that the residents were willing to back off on. And it seems to me that tonight would have been a great opportunity, and it's in front of the public, it's televised, there is no, you know, back room discussions or whatever, you know? Everything's out in the open. And if I could have the petitioner get up and explain to me and why you felt that you didn't want to meet as a group?
I'll take a stab at it. I think we felt, and we had spoken with Jim when we met together, that the best, you know, some things should be reviewed and thought about, considered. Can we do it? Can we not do it? I mean, there's nothing we could give just like that without thinking about it, right? And there's probably nothing they could give without thinking about it. So why not give us something to look at, think about, have some thoughtful give-and-take? And we just felt it was much more productive. But we didn't want to not meet with somebody if they wanted to meet with us. So we were, anyone, we were prepared, and we've demonstrated it, we've done it. I mean, the thought that we were unwilling to meet is completely untrue. We simply didn't want to meet with a big group. We were willing to meet with anyone individually and would gladly have looked at a list of proposals, right? And said, "Yes, we can do that." We were doing that anyway. But we were going to look at it and say, "Yeah, we could help there." You know, that give-and-take could have taken place without somebody trying to get us to do it right now here with 11 families in the room. That just wasn't the way it was going to work for us.
Okay, so you didn't want a big group, everybody talking, everybody yelling, "Out of control, blah, 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 ugly situation"?
No.
If you want, I'm just...
Kidding.
Yeah. Now, if you met with single residents in your office, they may, and I certainly don't want to speak for anybody, might feel pressured about being one guy against the company, that blah, blah, blah. Now, if that could have happened with Jim possibly being present at all the meetings of the individual, so that they have somebody that they trust with them and possibly feel like they weren't being snowballed or pressured or run over and that, I still think that this is a doable thing, and I'm in favor of it, but I think that architecturally it can be changed, it can be moved around so that everything's on and off of Ogden, depending on what the county says or whatever. This is still a doable thing, and I don't think enough prep between the residents and the company has happened yet for it to happen.
Well, let me be clear. What I think would have made the most sense in this case is for Jim to give me a list of proposed concerns that these 11 families had, where I would have had a chance to look at it and respond to it thoughtfully. In addition to that, we were willing to meet with anybody that wanted to meet individually simply because we wanted to make ourselves accessible and we didn't want to create a barrier or a wall. I think it was the right answer, and I think the opportunity was given, and I actually think that we have gone probably as far as we can go to address it. I'll give you an example. Let's say we did put a no-left turn on Blackhawk, okay? And these were the people that, all these people that are going to come from Clarendon Hills and Hinsdale. What are they going to do? They're going to take a right on Ogden and a right on Richmond, and you're going to put it all on that street. I think any solution, I've given this a lot of thought, I think it's, I just think that it's way overblown in terms of how much traffic's going to go down to Chicago Avenue. I mean, heavens, why wouldn't we just buy the strip mall next to our office and put the store there if we thought everybody was coming down Chicago Avenue? I mean, we are very convinced that the traffic's coming off of Ogden. So that's, I don't know if you want me to say more, but...
Okay, but what I'm saying is, the list that you're looking for from Jim can still be given to you by Jim.
Sure. He can give us a list. I just don't know if there's a lot more we can do.
Well, you don't know that unless you see the list.
That's right. And we'd be delighted to have it, it's fine.
Okay.
I want to amplify something here. Okay, I thought I started at the beginning of the night by saying that, you know, I've made myself accessible to any and all persons that want to speak. My cell phone number's been available, my email address's been available. I have spoken with Jim Addington on numerous occasions. I asked Jim Addington to go as an intermediary on my behalf, bring any folks that were uncomfortable meeting with me one-on-one with him as a representative, as per your comment earlier. So there's no reason anyone would be intimidated to meet with me, okay? I'm a piece of cake. This project is an incredible project for this village and for Chicagoland and for Westmont and for the residents. What we are proposing is going to add roughly 160... What we are proposing is going to add roughly 160 cars per day to Blackhawk and roughly 52 cars a day to Richmond. Now, people are saying, give up that access. And I'm saying, you're going to inconvenience 20% of the volume that's going to our store by making them go all the way to Ogden and turn right and turn left and all these things. These streets can handle the volumes that I've just described and that we've purported through this traffic study. We have done everything that the village has asked us to do and everything that this board has asked us to do. And we have made significant compromises. And the building that we're proposing is as far away from the neighborhood and as minimally impactful to the neighborhood as it could be, okay? So we've met with them, we've offered to meet with them, I've knocked on doors, I've met with people face to face, I've met with them in their houses, I met with the public library, I met at this public hearing here, I've had people to the office, I've asked Jim to intervene on my behalf. One thing I will say to what you said earlier, I mean, everyone has been very fair and very accurate with their comments. Jim articulated to the neighbors what I said. Mr. Priest will meet with you individually, he doesn't want to meet with a group. Mike Lonnie got up and repeated that that's what Jim said. When he canceled the meeting, he said, I know what you said, Jim. So I don't feel that there has been any nefarious intent on the part of the neighbors. As a matter of fact, I've been really impressed and respect all of these neighbors. You know, Tim Upchinorth and Mr. Karish and Jim Addington. I mean, he's given me a lot of advice prior to this night. Tonight, I've had numerous, really good, constructive, almost fatherly conversations with him. Today, he called me.
Careful.
Well, there's not that, there's not that great of a distance between us, but he's been through the wringer a few times and I haven't. We're new to this. But I'll tell you that we're trying really hard to do this, and we have made significant compromises, and this is a great project, and I think that it should stand on the merits that we've put forth this evening and that you all should vote on it. So we're willing to answer any more questions, but we've met with the neighbors, we've met with the neighborhood representatives, we've presented rebuttals to every one of the questions that have come up heretofore.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I am, I am still in favor of the project, and but I personally don't think there's been enough interaction between the residents and the petitioners. And if it goes on from us, I hope that the trustees see fit to ask for additional negotiation or whatever you want to say. Thank you, that's it.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. I had a lot of my questions answered last week and, or excuse me, three weeks ago when we met at the first half of this meeting. And at that time, I saw value in this project. And it was one of my wishes that there be more dialogue, as Commissioner Thomas has indicated. And while it looks like some of that has taken place, you can always question whether there was enough, whether there was too much, whether there was intent. I mean, we had a national election yesterday, and there were different sides to each issue across the country, and we have something like that here. What I don't feel is that this project ruins an entire neighborhood. I don't feel that. I've had commercial stuff built near my home, perhaps not as close, but certainly within 100 yards. And it's not, it's not had the same effect. I will say that it didn't have the traffic element that we see here because the traffic was routed through a different road. But we had someone talk about property values, I think more than one person talked about property values. And again, an area outside of my expertise, but common sense tells me that if perhaps traffic is going to reduce property values, I think the look and feel of a store like this might increase property values, that might be a net-net. No one ever brought up the fact that you could move to a neighborhood and now you could walk and pick up dinner for your family, send the kids down to get a loaf of bread or some bananas or something like that. There were some common sense things that exist. I wish I had something like that in my neighborhood, but we don't. That's a positive to it. So while there are things that have been discussed that can be perceived as negatives, there's also positives to this. I feel that the stormwater and the lighting issues are two non-events. I feel both of those can be satisfactorily taken care of, and both of those can be done so that the integrity of the neighborhood is preserved. That's my feeling. Other people may disagree. Again, I understand. I was very careful to reread the traffic study. I asked a lot of questions three weeks ago. I spent several hours in the corporate office on Chicago Avenue, which is about as close as you can get to your neighborhood also. I mean, the guys are right there, and they were very receptive to me coming down. And I spent a lot of time looking at drawings and asking a lot of questions and things like that. And I got a clearer understanding, as I did also tonight, on the amount of traffic. It's been rumored that 100% of the traffic is going to come from Chicago Avenue. I've seen it in written letters, and I've had people say that. I don't see how anyone can believe that 100% of the traffic is going to come from Chicago Avenue. We've had people say, no one got up here and spoke against this, or, excuse me, spoke in favor of this project. And while that may be true publicly, there have been many people, and I've had some write on the Blackhawk and Richmond block who have contacted me and have asked to remain nameless. They don't want to upset their neighbors. They don't want that perception. But they have said that they favor this project. They may have even signed petitions saying that they didn't. There's peer or neighborhood pressure that takes place on some of these kinds of things. This is an emotional issue, and oftentimes, emotional issues are difficult to work your way through and get to all the components that make that up because it is an emotional issue. That's sort of what defines it. I still think that this project is overall good, bringing in a company that looks to have eight to nine of these locations in DuPage County with a corporate office here, with the opportunity to increase revenue. And I'm not sure who it was, it may have been Fred, who said that, you know, do we restrict further restaurants from coming here? What I see is that, if we were to build another restaurant, what I see is that Nature's Best and Jewel will have to elevate their level of service. They'll have to elevate their level of products. They'll have to remain more competitive in pricing. If they don't, simple supply and demand economics says that they are going to lose business, but they're going to lose more than the initial projections of their gains are going to be. That's how I feel. That's looking at it from the business standpoint. I know we had a gentleman who was the next to last person, who made an eloquent and much appreciated speech about, doesn't matter about traffic, doesn't matter about the business, doesn't matter about the dollar signs, it's all about the people. I can tell you that the people in my community have told me that they favor this. Now, they don't live on the block, I understand that. But there are 26,600 residents or so in the village of Westmont. And I don't see this as ruining an entire neighborhood. So I feel, unless I hear something different here as we go through and around the horn here, that I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Rantin?
All right, everybody's been waiting for me, I just know it. All right. We're in favor of my parking for the employees towards the residence on the south end. I think that was a good idea. Yes, no? Mr. Priest?
I'm sorry.
Remember on the, remember on the south side, we said that further south, directly on Richmond there, where you're putting, you're changing the fence around. We wanted to keep it quieter there, and you had to have so many employees, 21 or...
Mr. Priest, if you could, the podium, the home audience, they cannot hear you.
Sure. That's fine. We would be happy to designate that as employee parking. That being said, I think that that is not going to make the Canopkas happy. I think it's going to make the Canopkas unhappy for this reason. I think people are going to be in the store, shopping, and out of there 45 minutes, plus or minus, okay? And they're going to go to their car, they're going to put their bags away, they're going to leave. I think employees, at the end of the day, are going to stand near their cars, they're going to talk, they're going to hang out, they're going to come in early, they're going to stay late. I think designating that as employee parking would have more, I don't mind, it's fine, we'll do it. But I don't think it's going to give the desired result that was intended in the last meeting.
Just a thought. And I hear, one more while you're still up there. We're looking, we're talking about the deliveries on its truck, on the truck dock there. You say it's only from four in the morning to six or seven. Why can't you focus that as another entrance, bigger entrance, the rest of the time?
I don't see any reason why we can't.
Because that's, you already have an Ogden, you've got an approach right there. I mean, if you focus something like that off Ogden and make the signs there, make it flashy, this is the way in and out, and don't focus so much on Richmond and Blackhawk. I mean, I usually go to Jewel the same light everywhere, every time I go to Jewel. I don't go to the side ones.
It's no problem, we can. The village engineer recommended that it be designed that way, so the answer is, we can.
Okay. And again, I have to, I have to echo, thank you, thank you very much. I have to echo my fellow commissioners. I think it's a good project. I don't think, I don't think the whole neighborhood wants to get rid of it. I think that traffic is a big concern, but I think it can be worked out. Some of this can be definitely hammered out, even between here and the, and the board. And again, you guys got to look at the planning and zoning. We're looking at giving these guys a chance to go to the board. We're going to put the lots together, we're going to, you know, do the plot of subdivision, give them a variance for the signs, and approve the site and landscape approval, which is a no-brainer. I mean, that's beautiful landscaping. So I think we got to give them a shot at this. And going to the board, I would recommend everybody goes to the board, and we get the meeting together, Mr. Addington, give them their list, what you guys want to see, and have them go through and have them give us a response. Because we don't have, there's nothing in front of us besides what we've hammered, we've been beaten around on the traffic thing. I mean, we need to hear, I like to hear some, I don't know, solutions. Let's hear some solutions to, or what you guys really want. And then traffic thing's one thing, but there's traffic everywhere. I cut through there, I try not to cut through Blackhawk because it's too busy. I'll go down another street to the west. So traffic is traffic, and I'm not giving up my truck, so. I have to tell you, I mean, traffic's traffic. I'm for this, but we got, I think we can do a little bit, a little bit of work on it and give these guys a chance. I've worked for a lot of developers, and most of them are jerks. These guys seem to put out a lot of effort and even try. I mean, usually it's one time, never talk. These guys have done pretty much, done a lot. If you give them another, give them a list and give them another chance, I think it's worthwhile. That's all I got.
Commissioner Van Buren?
He's smiling.
Well, my fellow commissioners eloquently expressed pretty much everything that I would like to say, and so I will sign off. Just say that I'm in favor of the project. I would like to see us vote on it tonight, get it in front of the village board, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I just have a couple of comments. We're here as a commission with a task of making a decision or a recommendation to the village board, yea or nay, as to appropriateness of a project such as this for the zoning district which it falls. And based on what it is, where it is, I feel it's a good project. As far as having a solution for every possibility, you know, of anything that may occur, I don't think that's possible. You know, they've made efforts, they've listened to the, to the nearby residents, their neighbors, and they've tried to make some accommodations. They may not be able to accommodate everybody's wishes, but they're trying. As far as impacting the community as a whole, as others have said, we have 26,000 and change residents in this community. The community of Westmont is the entire village. It's not two or three streets in the village. Yes, you are neighbors of this particular development or potential development. And no matter where you move in a village, you know, there, something's going to happen. May not be your neighbor, it may be two blocks away, but something's going to happen. There's always change. There's always things that is going to happen in the future. It may not be there the day you move in, but it may happen someday down the road. This area has been, as others have said, has been in decline. I mean, I've lived in the village for over 25 years, and it's gone downhill for most of that. You know, I think that resurrecting this particular parcel is a good thing. And, you know, I'm going to recommend that we send it to the village board. That's it.
My fellow commissioners have pretty much reiterated everything that's been on my mind. I also am in favor of this project. I don't believe the traffic will be as horrendous as what some people are making it out to be. There's been a lot of talk about the deliveries. I'm told that the deliveries are going to take place exceedingly early in the morning. They're only going to entrance and exit off of Ogden, towards Ogden. The only other question I had was your hours of operation. I thought it was to be nine to nine, now you're saying it's seven?
Seven to nine, that's what's down in the petition, that's what the traffic is.
Seven to nine. Okay, well then...
I'll clarify this.
I misunderstood.
I'll be there. We, oh, sorry.
We've talked about both. We just haven't made a final decision on it yet. So you haven't misunderstood. We've used both numbers, but we've requested formally seven to nine.
But again, that's what a strict understanding that you're going to have the smaller UPS style trucks, your small 20, 30-foot straight jobs that are going to come in and...
It will be 30-foot box trucks. That's what it will be.
Okay. And you're confident enough that this entrance on Ogden can be enlarged, where we could have your commercial traffic, your customers also use that?
It can't be enlarged, but it's, what's the dimension of it right now?
It's going to be 27.
The width of the driveway...
Yes.
Isn't necessarily what's limiting us in this case. What's limiting us is IDOT's design standards for where the curb, where the radius would return into the existing curb line of Ogden has to be a certain distance away from the property line extended. That's in essence the setting where the driveway can start. And based on the location where the building's at, we kind of work our way to what that driveway is. So expanding it isn't an option without getting, you know, if we could approach potentially, I suppose, IDOT for a waiver to that design guideline, but I, there's not been great success in that.
But your signage would be able to indicate that that is a ready driveway for customers to come to your store?
This is a little like why I wanted to take a look at a request and just give it a little bit of thought before I responded. Off the cuff, I would say, we think so, but we need to look at it and make sure that we can get, can make, can make it really viable for consumers. And we will, after this meeting, look to see if we can do that.
For the most part, practically, it's going to be ingress only. People are going to come in, they're not going to exit there.
That's probably for sure would be the case, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any further questions by the board?
Just a clarification. I think you saw a memo from Shannon Malik about the signage, the applicant requested exceptions. It was in the staff write-up, and it was presented to you at the last meeting about the signage, that they have multiple signage. Overall, their signage, the square footage of their signage is below what's required by code, but they are asking to exceed the number. They also have, are proposing an electronic message board along Ogden Avenue that is screened from the residence because it's in front of the building, as I understand it. But that electronic message board, as they explained, and this is in your staff write-up, is larger than the parameters allowed by code, in that it takes up the entire, I guess, square footage of the sign. It also will have some photographic images where current code only allows for alpha numeric depictions, so...
What I was planning, John, was I was going to ask that to be read in as a prelude to our motion, and then have it included as part of the motion.
Okay, so the motion will be assigned variance as follows, and then enumerate what is listed in Shannon's memo.
All right. First order of business then is I would enter under Planning and Zoning Item 10-031. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A. Map amendment request to rezone four parcels from our three single-family detached residence districts... district to B2 general business district.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion, roll call please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B. Plan of subdivision to consolidate seven parcels into one buildable lot.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion, roll call please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right. If we may have, Fred, could we have a reading of the, let's go with the findings of fact first, since we have a variance?
Yes, sir. Criteria number one, this is a request for a variance for signage on the subject property as follows. A, to allow more than two identification signs on a corner lot. B, to allow an electronic message board as a principal sign. C, allow an electronic message board to consist of 100% of the sign's surface area. And D, allow photographic images on an electric message board. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property layout for the proposed grocery store is unique in that it has street frontages along three different streets. Customer ingress and egress will occur on Blackhawk Drive and along Richmond Avenue. Likewise, the grocery store itself is visible to customers from all four sides and has two primary visual focal points, along Ogden Avenue to the north and from its primary entrance to the south. This unique layout and various access points necessitate additional signage, including an electronic message board, to both inform customers and market the business. The total square footage of all signs combined are below the maximum set by the zoning code and the applicant's significant economic investment in this property would be diminished if it could not install adequate signage, including an electronic message board and take advantage of its unique marketing program.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. These variances for additional and unique signage are necessitated by the fact that the property fronts onto three streets, including the heavily traveled Ogden Avenue, has several points of ingress and egress, and contains a store which is visible to customers from all four sides.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is primarily located along Ogden Avenue, a heavily trafficked and heavily developed commercial corridor. The primary signs will appear along the Ogden Avenue frontage. The electronic message board is proposed along Ogden Avenue is consistent with the high-density development in the area and will not constitute an adverse danger to motorists and will not be visible to residential properties. The remaining signage is consistent with other signage in the immediate area. Given the location and overall reasonable size of all signs combined, it is not expected that the proposed signage will have any adverse impact on surrounding residential properties.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted and approved. Could we have a reading of the memo from Shannon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the request for more than two identification signs for a corner lot, the following motion should be made at the November 3, 2010 special meeting. Dot point number one, request to permit electronic message board sign as a principal sign rather than having it mounted below the primary identification sign. Number two, request to permit a surface area of electronic message board portion of a sign to consist of 100% of the sign's surface area where code currently limits the message board to 40% of the sign's area. Number three, request to permit the use of photographic-style images where code restricts messages to alphanumeric characters. Going before the village board for discussion at the committee of the whole staff suggests the following wording. Zoning code variance request pertaining to signage, A, allow more than two identification signs on a corner lot, B, allow electronic message board as principal sign, C, allow electronic message board to consist of 100% of the sign's surface area, and D, allow photographic images on electronic message board.
Okay. Concerning Item C, zoning code variance request, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item C. Request for a variance for signage on the subject property as follows. A, allow more than two identification signs on a corner lot. B, allow an electronic message board as a principal sign. C, allow an electronic message board to consist of 100% of the sign's surface area. D, allow photographic images on an electronic message board.
Any more?
So moved.
Seconded. Well, that's a motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Do we have a question on the motion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, the modified site and landscaping plan approval for a 33,000-square-foot specialty food store.
So moved. Go ahead. Second?
Who was primary on that, I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion, a roll call please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, you have our recommendation for approval. Staff can tell you when you'll go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole. Fred, just for the public and everybody else, when do you anticipate them appearing before the committee of the whole?
November 11, 7:30 PM in this room.
November 11. Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, anything? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Anton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.